I'm not officially calling this to order.
Okay, but you're not going to get them to.
I did.
Oh, good, you did. You spoke.
So we're going to get started in a minute, but before we officially call the meeting to order, I know Kim is ready. Thank you, Kim. But once again, this week, we do have a very packed agenda. Tam mentioned last time it was three pages. It's three pages again. So just quickly run through what we're going to do and then we'll officially call to order. We've got a presentation at the beginning about our city ARPA funds. Thank you for being back, Mr. Ailes and Ms. Corliss. Then we've got multiple public hearings, so we'll try to work our way through those. Then we've just got some routine business communications from his honor, the mayor, communications from city offices and boards, and then we'll have a chance to break for some committee work and then we'll be back to finish it up. All right, so with that, call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, March 7, 2022, 7 o'clock. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen.
Here.
Crowley.
Here.
Feldman.
Here.
Houseman.
Here.
Rand.
Here.
Rotundo.
Here.
St. Holair.
Here.
Sweeney.
Here.
And Flowers.
I'm here. Counselor Houseman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And at the end, would you all remain standing for a moment of silence for the people in Ukraine and for all those who are affected by war and violence in our world?
At Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, so we do have a very busy agenda tonight, so why don't we get right to it? And we'll go to presentations, awards, and memorials. And as I said, we have a presentation from the mayor's team finance director, Brian Ailes, ARPA manager, Jamie Corliss, and they're here to talk to us about sort of an overview update of the city's ARPA funds. And Mr. Ailes and Ms. Corliss, thank you for joining us. It was nice to have you here at our last meeting to talk about the city's small business program, and thank you for being back to give us a broader update.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the city council. Good to see you all this evening. Here with Ms. Corliss, whom many of you already have had a chance to meet and talk with. We've got a presentation that Ms. Corliss has put together to kind of touch a few of the areas that I'm sure you all have questions on, want to have some discussion around. So we welcome that dialogue this evening. I did want to point out a couple quick things before Ms. Corliss gets into kind of the nitty gritty of the slides. And I don't mean to steal some of your thunder, but I did want to just touch briefly on the timeline, because it's important to understand where we were a year ago, where we are now, and all the things that we've accomplished in the short amount of time that we've been working on the ARPA and kind of where we're going from here, Ms. Corliss is going to deal with. But you should know that it was the last summer in 2021 that the city was awarded the ARPA funds, and that was the previous council was here. So we, as an administration, came before the council to request approval of that grant. And in doing so, that's the legal step of basically authorizing expenditures of the grant. So any grant that comes before the city comes before the council, and once approved, that kind of opens up the gates to say as long as the spending is within the confines of the grant, have at it. And so that authorizes me as a treasurer to spend money in certain way, and the mayor as the chief procurement officer to spend money within the confines of the grant. At that point, once it was accepted, we had individual meetings with all the council at the time. We also solicited some input from various stakeholders throughout the community to try to corral kind of the realm with which we were trying to kind of make some sense out of where the need was, what kind of desires were out there from councils, from stakeholders. And at that point, we even held a few public meetings about it, where the public was welcomed to come and give some input. And then, from that point forward, in November of this past fall, that's when Ms. Corliss joined our team. And since then, she's been focused on a number of different things. The most recent was the last time we were here, we talked about the small business program, and that was a big lift on Ms. Corliss's part, and I thank her very much for all the work she did there. But in addition to that, there was a lot of internal housekeeping that we needed to take care of. Ms. Corliss getting up to speed on all the legislation, developing some internal processes in terms of requesting, how that would go, tracking mechanisms, getting ready to ultimately be reporting on this, and the various types of information that she and our team requires in order to meet the reporting requirements on the legislation back to the state and the federal government on our spending. And so that brings us here, primarily because back when we had the meetings with the council back in the fall, it was very clear that we want to continue the dialogue with all the stakeholders throughout the community and with you counselors, so that this is not kind of administered in a vacuum, right? And that's why we're here this evening, so we appreciate that. And we also look forward to doing this periodically, when requested, to come before you and kind of give you an update on where we're at. So I'll stop there, because I can, I got plenty more to say later on, I'm sure. So I'll turn it over to Jamie now and let her go.
This term I get a remote, so that's exciting.
Every time you come back, you get something new.
It's like a reward system, right? So there are some things that haven't changed since Bryant mentioned he's done some presentations prior to me coming on board. The intent of the legislation did not really change. The amount Beverly received did not change. It's still at 12.6. The funds must be committed by 2014, the end of 2014, and expended by 2016. So, sorry, 2026. Sorry. So 2024, 2026, which means basically, you know, the planning really has to happen now, but there's some leniency about execution. So we have to know how the funds are going to be used. But if, you know, for example, if they get invested in a project that breaks ground at the end of 2024, that gives some time for it to be completed. So those are things that haven't really changed since the last update, even though the final rule came out in January and will take effect April 1. So those are the things that really haven't changed. Again, legislative intent, it's to, you know, help stabilize and rebuild the economy post the pandemic, to help address disproportionately impacted individuals, businesses, households. So these things have not really changed. I don't want to, I see people are still reading, so I don't want to flip. The timeline, Bryant kind of already touched on this. I just wanted to show, you know, at the beginning, there were some pretty linear, static things that happened. The funds were announced, they were accepted, meetings were held. Now we're transitioning into this phase where all of these activities are happening kind of concurrently. So we're engaging stakeholders, we're gathering input, we're talking to the community, we're rolling out initiatives, you know, we're planning. And that's going to happen all the way through until the funds are expended. So I just wanted to show that we're kind of in a different phase. We're in the, the funds are here, how are we going to spend them? You know, we're still getting input, because there needs to be some flexibility to respond to changing and emerging needs as we move throughout the two-year spending process. So there are some primary areas of spending that we're moving towards, rolling out initiatives and programs for. They include responding to the public health emergency, responding to the negative economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, replacing lost public sector revenue, I always have to say that one slow, capital improvements, and administrative costs. So I'm going to move through a breakdown of each of those areas with some more specific examples of what's allowable, and sometimes some examples of how we have either used those funds to address those areas, or some things that have been discussed, but might not be expended as of yet. So the first one is responding to the public health emergency. I think this is the area people are probably most familiar with and talk about kind of predominantly. You know, it's responding to the actual physical health impacts, which includes, you know, vaccination efforts. One thing specifically Beverly has done is distribution of testing kits. So anything that was not FEMA eligible, the ARPA can cover that difference. Contact tracing, PPE purchases, there's a whole long list of things that fall in that category. Beverly has done some contact tracing. Does anyone have questions about that area? I don't want to flip through all of them too fast. The next one is responding to the negative economic impacts. So like, when I was here last time, we talked about the Small Business Assistance Program. That falls under this category. The Artist in Residence Program, which happened over the summer, that's another example of what falls into this category and how some of the Beverly-specific funds have been utilized. The state has also recently issued some new grant opportunities under this area, which balance and kind of complement very nicely Beverly's own assistance. There's one specifically that's reaching out to minority and women-owned businesses, and they have a little bit more flexibility on when businesses were established in order to be eligible. So there, it's really, it's important to not be duplicative of efforts that are coming out of the state or other areas, and really try to focus on areas in Beverly that aren't going to be addressed by other funding sources.
Thank you. I did have one question about the previous slide about responding to the public health crisis.
Sure.
Are any of these funds able to be retroactively applied to things that we incurred debt for or used some other funds for historically? Because I know that this wasn't in the budget. We spent, we spent for vaccination efforts and testing and contract tracing retroact, like, previously. So can you apply any of those funds to that?
So, in my experience, a lot of them have been covered by FEMA or other, you know, CARES Act funding sources. I'm not sure how much of that actually hit the general fund, but it really, as soon as I hit the questions where, you know, FEMA's wrapping up this date, can ARPA start coming in to cover that? So it, the legislation, you know, we can cover costs up to the initiation of the interim rule. I don't know about paying debt. That would be, I'd want to ask more questions about, because that's kind of one of those not.
That makes sense. That's, yeah.
But it certainly has been, it can cover costs incurred as of the initiation of the legislation.
Got it. Thanks.
So can, economic impacts, those are some of the legislative options. Beverly's doing the Small Businesses Program. The Artist in Residence was a fun program. I liked reading about that. The replacing lost public sector revenue. This is one area where, when the final rule came out, the language around it shifted. So initially, in the interim rule, there was a calculation, a formula that had to be done based on revenue that came in and revenue that didn't, right? And it was capped. When the final rule came out, they kind of opened it up and said, up to 10 million without calculating, which I think really relieved the burden on a lot of smaller communities that kind of didn't see the value in doing the complicated calculations and justifications. But it also, what it really does is give a significant amount of flexibility. This is arguably the most flexible category for which spending can be conducted. So, again, the 10 million cap is legislative. It is not the Beverly's budgetary. I just want to make sure that. So that covers a whole plethora of, you know, public sector areas that lost a ton of revenue and funding. Construction of schools and hospitals. So one thing that is being discussed specifically in Beverly is the Lynch Park parking lot. I get all these, like, strings of words that are, really have to be enunciated. The Lynch Park parking lot is one thing that's being discussed for this category of funding. Also things, you know, like staffing the welcome desk and making sure people are masked and know where they're going, that also falls under this category.
I think, Ms. Corliss, why don't you go ahead through your presentation, and then we'll do all our questions at the end. That seems easier.
Awesome. Capital improvements. This is, you know, major capital expenses, building educational facilities or health facilities, investing in, you know, like HVAC, major HVAC improvements. One thing I know that has come up, that would fall under this category is McPherson, the McPherson Building Youth Center. Thank you. Blanking on that. That's kind of the biggest one that has been discussed under this category. Administrative costs, my salary, kind of indirect costs associated with, you know, the increased flow of work for individuals across the city would also fall under this. I think currently, right now, it's really just my salary and kind of the indirect costs associated with that, that the city is spending in that category. So this is, I love pie charts. This is my preliminary, or not my, the preliminary budget allocations by the areas which we just kind of discussed, that we just went over. It's based on a percentage of the overall 12.6. And really, I'm going to stress preliminary. One of the biggest things that is clear is that there needs to be a maintenance of flexibility, to be responsive to changing needs. You know, none of us saw the variance that have continually cropped up, so we never know when we're going to have to shift, you know, shift directions and priorities. So opportunities for public input is also consistently an important piece of legislation. So some things that we're continuing to do to encourage transparency and input. We're developing a hub, an ARPA hub to put on the city's website. Currently, that's housing the Small Business Assistance Program information and all the documentation associated with that. We're continually engaging community stakeholders, whether it's one-on-one meetings, asking for input and feedback, holding, you know, some of the groups around, like we did with the stakeholder meetings around the Small Business Assistance Program. Really, you know, when there's an idea, reaching out to experts to get, you know, further information on the strategies we're using. People are always welcome to contact me at thearpap@beverlyma.gov, whether it's with questions, suggestions, if you want to schedule meetings. And so hopefully, as part of the hub, there'll be a part that's contact us and encouraging input and kind of steering people to provide input. That's my last slide. So now I'm ready for questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Corliss. Counselors, what questions? Counselor Feldman?
Thank you. When we were looking at the pie chart, I see that you had everything kind of broken out into percentages, and you mentioned the Lynch Park parking lot project. So I was wondering if there are, if those percentages were based on possible projects that you've already kind of noted that would be good uses of the money to get those numbers? Or, I'm specifically thinking of like, two things that I'm wondering if they're in the queue, kind of, and like, where they would fall in that. And so, how much of that, the pie chart and the ideas behind this are kind of already queued up, I guess? How much room for new ideas is there?
So it depends on the category. Administrative costs, you know, they're pretty easy to project, project out. So that one's a little bit more based on more tangible projections. Some of the other sections are based on, like you said, conversations or things that are happening now, like the health initiatives. There was consideration of, you know, the testing costs that we knew wouldn't be covered by FEMA, and how much would we need to cover with that. So it really has been based on the top-level conversations that have happened, where, where the vision seems to be steering. So I wouldn't say that they're locked into the X amount for this project, or X amount for this project. It's, okay, some of the big things that are coming up are X, Y, and Z. What would it look like to really make a significant contribution to that area? If that makes sense? Yeah, of course.
Mr. Mayor, thanks for being here with us.
Oh, of course. It's good to see everyone. To Counselor's question, I did want to say two things. First, on the Lynch Park parking lot, we've been looking at that and tracking that for a few years and trying to get ready to do it. Looking initially to the Lynch Park Enterprise Fund for that. The Enterprise Fund is an example of where we've seen significant lost revenue over a couple of summers. Excuse me. So instead of the Enterprise Fund, it seems appropriate to look to that lost revenue money, to try to do that, just so everybody understands kind of how that's, you know, factoring in. And in terms of other things, that's part of, you know, when, when, when we all met last summer, and then we met in this forum last summer, you know, and you folks voted to accept the grant, we committed that this would be an ongoing conversation. You know, you saw the dates. Now, let me make sure I say this right. I've understood that it's programmatic spending through the end of calendar year '24. Commitments on capital can go two years longer, but I could be wrong. That's how I've understood it. I see, we're so fortunate that we have a counselor who works on this every day, on his day job, Counselor Sweeney. So thanks for that. So at any rate, I mean, this is ongoing, and we're going to be in this conversation with the whole of our set of department leaders, and with you folks, and with a lot of community partners. As you know, on the Small Business Grant Program, you know, we asked the council president to be part of the conversation from the start, along with our partners throughout the local business community. So that's just an example of trying to, you know, trying to get to the right people and get all the right input to start to make the, you know, these kind of decisions as we go. Thanks.
Counselor Rotundo and Counselor Bowen.
Thank you, Madam President. So with the part of money, 12.6, where it is over so many years, where are we at currently, or what are we anticipating over the next so many years, how to break that money up? I know there's capital improvements that has to be spent at certain times, but do you have sort of more of a better breakdown right now, or a better feel of where money would be spent, say, for '24 or for '23? Have you gotten further into the budget with that on ARPA? Are you still kind of flowing that out?
We're still developing the phases in which it'll be expended.
I'll set Counselor.
I am, thank you.
Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. And I have a few quick questions. One is actually building on that. Just, is there a snapshot of how much we've spent so far? Whether it's through December or to date?
The largest accrual would be in the testing distribution. That is running us, I think it was, the last check was about $300,000 total with all of the testing and peripheral expenses. So I'd put us currently right around $400,000.
Thank you. And related to Counselor Feldman's question, I think, I was curious about several of the projects in the 2022 capital expenditure plan, which was also part of our packet tonight, and didn't see any indications in that report of where ARPA money might be used, but had a few that, whether it's HVAC for the library or the senior center, IT upgrades that allow us to allow virtual participation, things that jumped out to me as planned expenses that seem to fit the ARPA priorities. So can you just speak to which of the capital expenditures in that plan you're hoping to use ARPA money for as priorities allow?
We're probably going to tag-team the mayor and I on this, because this is a conversation we have often. The legislative intent of ARPA is specific to the pandemic, right? And so when we read through the legislation, that's what triggered us and other stakeholders to take a closer look at the services we're providing to at-risk youth, specifically within the census tract, which runs effectively from Gloucester Crossing, if I get this right, up to around Henry's. Is that about right? Yeah. And so we really, at that point, reevaluated kind of our capital priorities that have been listed in the plan, because it highlighted the fact that there's a real need, and we can make a very good impact to that population by possibly providing some enhanced services and recreation and socialization opportunities that are very difficult on the campus of the McPherson Center right now, as it is. And so that's kind of where that kind of project came from. With the other capital projects that are within the capital plan, sure, there's a number of them. And when you look at the numbers in that capital plan, I don't think anyone here would say there's a shortage of demand for funds to get projects done. But that's kind of how we wound up focusing our attention towards the McPherson Center as opposed to another capital project. The other piece I would add is that generally, even if we're spending money in a lost revenue category, the more we can draw a correlation between that spending and the legislative intent of the legislation, the better off we all are, right? Because that's really where the money's, why it's coming to Beverly. And so that's why that project lined up more so than maybe some others.
Two further thoughts on that. Mr. Ailes mentioned the eligible federal census tract, which is, you got to, it's roughly ran tool down to the Bass ribbon around Gloucester Crossing. And so that, the teen center being really a walk-through, walk-to, bike-to, skateboard-to kind of resource for our youth and teens being so critical, and the concerns we all have with their social, emotional, mental health, their developmental, their development as young people, that seems a real good fit. And so that's, you know, we, as you know, we've talked with you folks about bringing on an OPM to start looking at the facility, working with partners, obviously like, where'd it go, like the Y, because they, you know, they are a partner in running the services down there. So that's one. And then another point, you mentioned the library HVAC system. Absolutely. You know, we've talked about that. It is, it's really our default, default go-to in the downtown for both a warming center in the winter and a cooling center in the summer in any extreme weather events. It's also all good things that a library is, right? And so that may well be a place where we tap some ARPA funds. And, you know, then there's that, that kind of balance. We're all trying to responsibly manage our operating funds, our free cash, our capital decisions on longer-term borrowing and this. So it is. And that's why, you know, the more conversation together, the better, because, you know, no shortage of good ideas, the more you get people together. Thanks.
And then I think just the last question for now, is last week, we heard about the Small Business Program. And I'm just curious, I think the deadline is this week, so was curious how applications are coming in? Are they on pace? Is there more we can collectively do to help get that direct assistance right to people?
So we are, have extended the application deadline through to March 16 at 5:00 p.m. I love all the notes. Yes, yes. So distribute that information widely. It's already updated on the city website. We did a final mailing. We've sent post, we did two-sided postcards. Ronnie helped me design them. I have been appreciating her acumen in that area very much. So we, you know, we distributed two-sided postcards that are really easy to hand out. We, you know, I gave some to the Chamber of Commerce, gave some to Beverly Main Streets. We have flyers. We've been like, redoubling those. I consider them kind of old-school efforts, right? The actual in-hand paper. To date, I'm still processing emails. I'm getting, you know, probably a dozen a day of full applications. My last count, I think it was 38 completed applications, and I still have about 20 emails to go through. And managed, you know, we talked to a couple of businesses today about clarifying some questions. So for me, that's a pretty good turnout already. And I do anticipate a push, you know, in the next couple of days, and then again, right before, you know, the extension deadline. So, but I'm always happy if people have networks or contacts and I can provide you with information that would be helpful to distribute. I'm always more than happy.
I'll set Counselor Bowen. Thank you. Counselor Rand.
Thank you. Thank you for being here again. Let's see. Oh, so actually, something, Mayor, that you said kind of sparked this question in my mind. You mentioned the library as kind of our warming and cooling center for communities downtown. And I'm wondering if there has been much discussion around what we could use ARPA funding for some of our most vulnerable citizens who are without a home right now. And also, maybe what, where that falls under, if that falls under health impacts, or what category that, of spending that would be? category that of spending that would be in?
Yep, so assistance to households falls under the negative economic impacts. It's kind of where they, I try not to look at Councilor Sweeney. They, you know, they, that's where educational disparities and, you know, missed education instructional time falls under the negative economic impacts. So that's where questions about addressing, you know, the under or unhoused populations would be. I happened to look today at the, you know, the state's website and was looking at some of the things that they're also pushing out. So there were huge earmarks and allocations in that area, and, you know, it certainly came up at some of the stakeholder meetings prior to my tenure. It isn't something that has come up again since then, and is one of those, you know, we're keeping an eye on how the state is addressing it, and if there continue to be gaps and that conversation comes up, we're more than happy to have that discussion. But there, you know, the increased for first-time homebuyers, I think the down payment assistance went up to $25,000. There's huge investments in, you know, addressing chronic homelessness and those areas coming out of the state right now. So we're definitely keeping an eye on that, and again, trying not to be duplicative in where we address, what efforts we're addressing.
That makes a lot of sense. I just have one follow-up question. Thank you. So I guess I'd like to just put it out there, I guess consider this me bringing it up, that I think a day center, much in the same way that a youth center is a top priority for me, that are reimagining the youth center and how it's working in our city and its facilities and programming. I think on the other side of that, another top priority for me is some type of day center for people who find themselves without facilities other than the library. And I know, I agree completely that there is no shortage of things we could spend money on, so I understand that. But I guess I can formally say that that is a top priority and concern of mine. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rand. Any other counselors with questions or comments? Council Housman.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I have, I guess, a specific question and then sort of a more general comment, I suppose, in terms of priorities, which is also kind of a question as well. The very specific question is, in terms of responding directly to the purpose behind these funds, which came as a result of, you know, a COVID pandemic, where are we on HVAC systems in all of our schools, particularly the elementary schools, which are the older ones? Are all of those exactly where we would want them to be? And if not, where do they lie?
No, no, thanks, Jamie. Great question, Counselor. We were meeting with the superintendent this morning, and Mrs. Sherburne on some budget conversation, and we know that there's an ongoing conversation around HVAC systems at the schools. Some money being set aside or proposed by the superintendent to the school committee to be set aside out of ESSER in that, in that direction. And I think you remember, we spent about $600,000 in CARES funds to make improvements to two of the HVAC systems. One was Cove, and maybe the other was Hannah? There were two of the elementaries, because it was when we were opening back up in the school year 2020, '21, and we wanted to make sure that those systems were ready to operate optimally during the colder months, which was what those improvements were intended for. So they all are going to be replaced soon, those HVAC systems, as Commissioner Collins says, you know, their life cycles are kind of comparable to the life cycles of the roofs, and they're all come and do. Remember, we did a school every year for five, six straight years, right? McEwen opened, and then one at a time, the schools got done while the kids went through McKay for a year, if you remember that model. So we've got six roofs, and McEwen's turning 25 this year, if I've got it, if I'm doing the math right. So they're all coming up on life cycle, both for roof replacement and new HVAC systems. And to answer your question, you know, maybe we'll look here for that, but I think that's also, that kind of together collectively managing our various resources to do different things.
Yeah, because I mean, COVID is one pandemic, but through history, we've had many respiratory-related illnesses, and so it seems to make obvious sense to address that specifically with these, with these funds, or others that are available. The more general sort of question slash comment, and I'm not sure which sort of comes first, is sort of the, as we try to identify and juggle relative priorities, we have, well before COVID, we've had a, you know, capital expenditure plan, and we've had needs, and we've had plans to address them in whatever priority they seem to present themselves. And I'm wondering, I guess my preference is that we try to use that as much as possible, that sort of legacy set of plans and priorities as much as possible for capital improvement projects without relying on ARPA. Because, as we've said, there's no lack of things to spend money on, you know, in this plan. And I am concerned that services to people, that things which might be unique to COVID or health-related measures, like socioeconomic, excuse me, a socio, help me out here. Thank you very much. Are things very specific to COVID that don't really relate necessarily directly to rebuilding any particular building, notwithstanding the merits and of any particular project? So I guess I'm interested in, Mayor, how you're sort of sorting through philosophically how much to rely upon ARPA funds for capital projects that have already been in place, that we've already had priorities, that we've already had, you know, funding plans in place that would really, to my way of thinking, sort of be separate from responding to COVID, be separate from responding to health-related issues. That's a relatively vague question, I'll acknowledge, but I guess I'm concerned that we take too much percentage of the ARPA funds and spend them on capital expenditure programs. Not that I'm opposed to doing it, but I think we need to be really careful to not say, wow, we have a great opportunity here to go after, you know, a big-ticket item. So I just want to be very careful that what we're doing is, to my mind anyway, is that we are, we really are doing it in a way that is very targeted.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think we're trying to carry the, kind of the basic value here of ultimately spending programmatically what we need to, and then being able to turn to some capital expenditures with what remains, with what we can, you know? So I think that's, you know, and Mr. Ailes will tell you, because he tells me every time we talk about this, you know, we've got to not, we've got to make sure that, you know, over the next few years, we don't spend it all in year one or all in year one and two, because, you know, things may show themselves in a second and a third year. What do we get, roughly three and a half years in total to spend the programmatic piece till the end of calendar year '24? And you want to make sure that there's some in reserve for that year if something shows itself that wasn't that apparent today, that isn't that apparent today. So not to belabor, but I think, you know, as a guiding principle, we want to make sure that we spend programmatically what ultimately we all agree needs to be spent programmatically. I will say, on the lost revenue piece, the lost revenue is significant. Mr. Ailes has a better handle on the, you know, the total bottom line of what we could see at a certain point, but the lost revenues impact our ability to deliver both services and service debt, and pay for some of the smaller capital work that we have been together trying to pay through free cash and other allotments as opposed to bonding force. So, you know, it does all kind of mush back together, right? Even so, but I think that's probably the best way to look at it, is, you know, let's together try to sort through and make sure that we understand as we go over the next couple of years where we need to spend programmatically and do so.
Okay, thank you very much for the answer. And I have one other request, and that is if Mr. Perry wants to say anything about our discussion, to invite him to do that.
I will. Mr. Perry, do you mind just holding? There's two counselors to my left who are, have follow-up questions, and then if that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Council Rotendo.
Thank you, Madam President. So talking about the whole picture, you know, the $12.6 million, and I know you don't have numbers, and we keep talking about the McPherson Center or, you know, putting money back into the Lynch Park for the parking lot. As we move forward on the process for the next few years, will we get reports back to say, we've spent $1 million in the small business grant money? We've spent real money. We're not seeing real money right now, because there's nothing really to see, we don't know yet. We know the administrative costs, whether it's duty, salary, and some other things. But as we go further in the process, will you be able to report back to us with that pie chart and saying, out of that pie chart, we spent $1.2 million, we spent it here? So that way, we're having more of an accountability on our part. I mean, we don't have to, I mean, technically, by the law speaking, we don't have to get accountability, but you have agreed to, and so we will. So I just want to make sure that there will be some sort of reports that will come back to us as money is spent over the next few years.
Yes, certainly anticipate continual updates as there's more information to be relayed.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
And Council Bowen, please.
Great, thank you. Just a quick follow-up on the different types of direct services we might be able to provide, and I love the idea of a day center providing services, and I think it can be both physical spaces and just help navigating all the services that are available. You mentioned sort of complimentary programs from the state, direct federal programs, and I think one of the challenges for people is just finding where there is assistance, and maybe the small business assistance program, we're learning that directly. So has there been any thought to additional outreach staff? I know the senior center has fielded a lot of different kinds of calls than they have in the past during COVID, and so just thinking about either centrally at City Hall or distributed through key departments, a couple of years of flexing up that sort of social service support and connection, if not actual direct assistance where we can.
Why don't you go first then?
Yeah, that communication.
So really, yes, to all of the above, and specific to seniors, we, I had that conversation with the Council on Aging Board at last month's meeting. I think Jamie hasn't heard so much about it, because she's had her head down trying to put this grant program together, but we will be talking about it. I think a threshold question with some of these is where is the, if money is to be put to a certain task, like more seniors are finding it challenging to meet their food security needs or housing concerns, where is it best to put those resources, right? Is it through our senior center, is it through one of our local nonprofit partners? You know, there, when any of us get an inquiry about housing, you know, we, you know, we think of a few different places right away, right? And so we have our resources at Harbor Light, at the Housing Authority, at Bootstraps, at the Senior Center. So part of that is an ongoing conversation we're having about, you know, a likely, a likely utilization of some resources to try to help cover that, what seems to be a really real growing set of questions and concerns. And as I said, once Jamie exhales from the grant program, I think we're going to be moving, you know, moving in that direction pretty quickly.
I'll set Council Bowen.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, counselors? And if not, I'll invite Mr. Perry to come on up and just, if you have anything you'd like to add to our conversation.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I have been monitoring this on your behalf. One of the first things I pushed when we had our meetings, I think, Madam President, you were at the picnic table with us, was making sure that they had staffing to run this for, because we just don't have the resources here in the city to do that, so it was tickled to death that Jamie's on board, so I think that was a good thing for the city. My only cautionary tale with regard to whatever we finally spend is, keep in mind, this is going to be depleted eventually, and we have to be careful that whatever we spend it on, and I'm more a little concerned if there's programs, those programs are eventually going to sunset, whatever it may be, and we have to be, I just caution that we have to be a little careful as a city to make sure that whatever we do spend it on, we understand it sunsets, or we have to build it into our budget going down the road. So that's just my only concern I have. But in general, everything I hear has been pretty good. I think Jamie's doing a great job, from what I can see. I know that there isn't much money that has been spent so far. I have pushed her already for reports of spending, so I assure you, we will be sharing that with you. But other than that, I think things are looking pretty good.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Counselors, any last thoughts or questions on this topic for now? All right. Mr. Ailes, Ms. Corliss, or Mr. Mayor, any final thoughts or comments that you'd like to share?
Thank you for having me. I'm always happy to talk about it. And if anyone, you know, any of the suggestions or ideas, I'm happy to take meetings and discuss them, even just because it furthers my knowledge of Beverly, so I always welcome those meetings. And thank you for having me again.
Thank you very much. Thanks for giving us two nights of your time and for all the work that you've done.
I would also just add, those handouts that we mentioned earlier, we've got stacks of them downstairs, right? Excuse me. So we'll make sure you all have them for your constituents before you leave this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. And I did want to mention, Ms. Corliss, you sort of gave a nod to Ronnie Jacobson, who's here, also from the mayor's team, but just want to acknowledge that Ronnie, the mayor's constituent services director, is here with us as well. Thanks for being here, Ronnie. Thank you very much. Thanks for the conversation, counselors, and the questions, and this will be an ongoing conversation for all of us, I'm sure, between ourselves and also the city. So we have five minutes before our first public hearing, and we do have one citizen speaker. So Christine, Mr. Palma, would you like to come on up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record? And then you have up to five minutes to address us. And Mr. Palma, it's nice to have you back with us. I remember the end of last year, you said it was your first time speaking here. It's nice to have you back at the podium.
Thank you. My name is Christine DePalma, and my address is 27 Chase Street, and this is my second time speaking publicly. I'm here this evening to read a land acknowledgement. As we gather here in this place, we acknowledge and honor the original indigenous inhabitants of this land, the Nomkeeg and Potucket bands of the Massachusetts Tribal Nation, which continues today through the membership of the Massachusetts Tribe. We acknowledge their ancestral and continued connection to the land. We also recognize our obligations to this land, to better environmental care and stewardship, to which the indigenous people who care for it have long called us. As we work toward diversity, equity, and inclusion, we acknowledge the importance of lifting up and inviting in many voices, including those of indigenous people, and of including those voices and perspectives in our discourse, in our decision-making, and in our actions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Palma, and thank you for your patience, and I am glad that we got you in before the public hearing, because otherwise you would have been with us for a long time tonight. So thank you for being here with us. Ms. Kent.
Accept the minutes?
Yes. Let's try to get a little bit of our business done. Let's see if we can accept the minutes of our previous meetings. We have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. One is from our regular city council meeting, February 22, 2022, and the other is from Legal Affairs Committee of the whole meeting from February 28, 2022. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. Ms. Kent, let's go to communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Order number 68. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a student awareness of fire education grant for $6,275 and a senior safe grant for $3,255 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Department of Fire Services. Total grant award is $9,530 for public fire and life safety initiatives in our community. This important grant funding will be used by the Beverly Fire Department to teach fire and life safety to children in schools. The program teaches students to recognize the dangers of fire and the fire hazards of tobacco products through 23 key fire safety behaviors taught in developmentally appropriate ways. In addition, grant funding will be used grant funding will be used for the senior safe program, which aims to reduce adult fire deaths through fire and life safety education. Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both mayor and city council approval before any grant, air, mock, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve these grants by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on March 7, 2022. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. K. Hill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. And I think that brings us exactly to 7:50, but perfect timing, Ms. Kent. You read that letter just right.
Thank you.
So, 7:50. We'll open our public hearing on order number 47, a transfer of $70,920 from the Waterway Improvement Fund. I do want to mention that there are sheets here to sign up for any of the public hearings, so should there be anyone here, or anyone who's watching on BevCam and wants to quickly come down here, you can just sign up on one of the sheets for the public hearing that you're interested in speaking about. With that, Mr. Ailes, welcome back to the podium.
Do you need?
Yes, I would love that.
Order number 47, ordered that the city council of the city of Beverly hold a public hearing on March 7, 2022, at 7:50 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor Council Chambers, live on BevCam, relative to the transfer of $70,920 from the Waterway Improvement Fund. The transfers consist of $35,000 to support the CAD cell feasibility study grant, $32,800 to support the hoist pier construction grant, and $3,120 to support the Glover War float feasibility study grant. And this was in the newspaper on February 25.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Mr. Ailes?
Thank you, Madam President. The order you, or request you have before you this evening, requesting approval, as the, Ms. Kent read the order, is pretty clear, straightforward. This is effectively an administrative adjustment that we're attempting to make here. All three of these grants were received and approved last year in 2021. The match components of them are what we're trying to do here. Ideally, they're done in conjunction with the grant approval. However, there was a misstep, and we, for the first one there, the CAD cell feasibility, failed to make that request before the council. So this would be the match component of that grant. It represents 20% of the total grant that was approved last calendar year. For the other two, the hoist pier construction and the Glover War floats feasibility, the grants required a 20% match. We initially calculated the 20% match on the grant award value, and the 20% match should have been on the total project value. So these make up the difference. And so, that's what we're requesting this evening. We're requesting it come from the Waterway Improvement Fund, which is a fund that the city has at its disposal for water-related projects. Currently, that fund has $102,000 in it, and so we're requesting a significant portion of this be put towards these projects to run these projects aground.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Counselors, any questions for Mr. Ailes on this one? Counselor Housman?
Yeah, I just have one question. The Water Improvement Fund is not an enterprise fund?
It's not.
And so, is it contained within the general budget?
It is not. It is a standalone fund authorized under Section 5G of Chapter 40, which states that any city or town can establish a municipal waterway improvement fund, maintenance of fund, to receive revenue. Currently, what funds that particular fund is 50% of the annual boat excise tax that the city receives go into this fund, and it's a revolving fund.
Okay, so it's a, all right.
Or is it a special, it might be a special revenue fund. I don't know off the top of my head, but it is a special revenue fund. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
So, it's not an enterprise fund, but it does function very much like an enterprise fund?
It's not required to be budgeted. It's not part of the tax rating process. Because it's a special revenue fund, it stands all by itself, and we can't touch any of those funds without council action.
Okay. And the other 50% then goes into the general revenue?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Other questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Rotendo?
Quick question, nothing to do with the Harbor Management Authority, correct this? I mean, I know they had a part of the matching. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is, you know, projects that they've been involved in obtaining the grant. They've been working with our grants director, Catherine Barrett, last year to obtain these grants, and, you know, they're helping to, I guess, effectively manage portions of it as well, down in the waterfront.
So some of it was just a mistake administratively, that wasn't matched properly?
Yes, yes.
So this is just playing to make up. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotendo. Other questions or comments? Counselor Feldman?
Yes, thank you. You had mentioned that it was funded by 50% of the boat excise tax, correct?
That fund is correct.
And how much is that annually?
It's roughly $15,000 to $20,000 annually. So every five or six years or so, I think, was the last time we looked to this fund, to fund a particular match for a project. Typically, a match would come from either the general funds free cash or the Harbor Management Authority's operating budget that comes before you every year for approval. But in this case, there's sufficient funds in the Waterway Improvement Fund. It's an appropriate use of that funding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Feldman. Counselor Rand?
Thank you. Very quickly, and this is just a matter of me putting a timeline in order. So, the CAD feasibility study grant, this is funding the feasibility study that has already been completed, or is this funding the one, a new one going forward?
So, this is the one we were talking about a year ago. I don't believe the work's fully complete on it. This would represent the city's portion of match for the project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Rand. Other questions or comments from councilors? Anyone from the public would like to speak on this public hearing? Mr. Perry, our budget analyst, would you like to comment on this?
Thank you, Madam President. Very quickly, I sent you a memo over the weekend on a lot of these, which we'll be talking about quickly tonight. It's a best practice if you have an opportunity to get grants to match with some of the municipality's funding, so it's a good thing, because we bring in outside revenues to augment the various projects we want to do. I see no problem with it. It's an appropriate matter. As Mr. Ailes said, we have sufficient funds with $102,000, and I would recommend adoption of the proposal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Any last questions or comments on this public hearing on order 47? Okay. With that, to close this public hearing, refer that back to Finance and Property. And we do have some time before our 8:10 public hearing. Mr. Ailes, did you want some time to give an overview on free cash before we enter into the next public hearings?
Yes, I'd be more than happy to. It's about maybe five to eight minutes or so. Is that okay?
That is perfect. And if you only do five minutes, Ms. Kent can quickly read another letter.
Oh.
If you go longer, she'll quickly read the letters later.
Well, thanks again for affording me the opportunity. In speaking with the president earlier last week, we thought it might make some sense to just very quickly brush up on what free cash is, because you have a number of requests before you this evening to utilize free cash. So, I thought it would be important for new council members, the old council members, people at home, to just understand how we use free cash, how it gets replenished, what we use it for, and how it's beneficial to taxpayers to use it the way we do. First, I'll start with the definition. The Division of Local Services is the financial oversight authority for cities and towns in the Commonwealth. They define free cash as the amount of funds that are unrestricted and available for appropriation. I like to think of it as a savings account. So it's effectively at the end of the fiscal year, we close our books, and it's what's left in the savings account. And you can use that money for any lawful purpose that the law allows. What we here in Beverly do is that we have set some policies around appropriate uses of that funding, and I'll get into that in a second. How it gets certified each year is, at the end of the fiscal year, the city closes its books, and it submits all its financial statements to the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. They have a department there, the Bureau of Accounts, that reviews all that, and they effectively compute what the city's free cash is. Free cash, again, is just another term for available funds that's not designated to anything. The timing on this is typically in the fall, because we close our books on June 30. We go through a few weeks of cleaning the books, making sure everything's running through the system properly. By the time we get everything cleared up, we submit to DOR. It takes them a little while to review. It's usually October, November timeframe that we get our free cash certification. This is important to understand, because there's a blackout period. You cannot use free cash or appropriate free cash from the start of the fiscal year until you've certified your free cash balance. And that's because Division of Local Services doesn't want you spending money you may not have, right, until they say you have it. And so, that's kind of the timing of it. There's things that happen during operations that increase our free cash levels, and there's things that we do that decrease our free cash levels, and every year, these wash out and ultimately become the certified balance. The things that help our free cash balance year to year are underspent appropriated budgets. So if you give a particular initiative or department some funds through your process, and we don't spend it all, it goes back to free cash at the end of the year. If we budget revenues at a certain level to support our operating budget, and we bring in more revenues than we've budgeted, those additional revenues go to free cash. So that's how you replenish free cash as you use it. The things we use it for are defined down below, and they have been outlined in our free cash policy. The focus here, if you notice, there's a theme. They're all one-time in nature, and that's important, because this isn't a recurring revenue source. So you don't want to build in recurring costs into a non-recurring revenue source, because eventually you fall off a cliff. So, one-time expenditures, capital projects, stabilization funds and reserves are appropriate. Paying down debt for capital projects is an appropriate use, and obviously unforeseen or emergency needs is also appropriate. And ideally, what we do as we go through the year is, we monitor the positive variances throughout the year to make sure that we're not depleting free cash below a level that we can't replenish back to within our target range. And so, we're constantly monitoring and constantly trying to balance the ins and the outs, so that we hit a certain range at the end of the fiscal year. The policy calls for hitting a range between 3% and 8% of our operating budget. This is historically how we've done since implementing that policy, since FY 2016. This chart shows a band of green that you can see that shows the upper limit, which is 8% of our operating budget, and the lower limit, which is 3% of our operating budget. And then, the little zipper line that goes through that is the free cash balance. And the peaks of the mountains represent the certification levels at the end of every fiscal year, and then the valleys represent the amounts that we've spent free cash down to in a given fiscal year. And then, the next incline represents the replenishment, back to the next certification level. That's how this chart works. The dotted line at the end here assumes if all of the requests before you this evening are approved, we would go from upper 8% range down to about the middle range of the free cash range that's appropriate, given our policy. As we go further and further into the fiscal year, if we see revenues and expenditures materializing favorably, more than we're estimating now, we will likely come back before the council and request additional appropriations from this free cash balance. But we don't do that until we're certain that the monies are going to materialize, because we don't want to overspend the balance. These are a list of historical uses of the free cash. You can note that all of them fall within the acceptable uses that we noted in the previous slides. A lot of mid-to-small-size capital projects here that have been funded. Also, you can see, you know, unforeseen costs such as the snow and ice shortfalls. That's 2015, when we overspent our ice budget by about $1.5 to $2 million. We needed to go to free cash to fill that gap. And then, my last slide just touches on the benefits to taxpayers. There's a few of them, and these are very high-level, but generally, this strategy is beneficial, because it allows us to tackle the mid-to-small-size capital projects without placing the burden of funding those on the annual operating budget. And by doing that, what it does is, it creates flexibility within the annual operating budget by not committing to fixed costs year after year that restrict the budgetary flexibility. And that's a big benefit from rating agencies, too. They like to see a lot of budget flexibility. The second benefit is that it ensures that the money we're spending is actually in the bank. We're not committing to expenditure level before we see it materialize. So it reduces the financial risk for the city as well, the risk of overspending future revenues. Another benefit is that it built and maintained reserve levels. So we've utilized free cash over the years to structure the city in a very stable way, so that we can and are prepared to handle the next economic downturn. We've been able to put money into the stabilization fund to do that. And then, the last one is that we're paying for cash for these mid-to-small-size projects. So you avoid bonding costs. When we issue debt, it costs us the city money. So we avoid those costs. We also avoid interest costs. And so, in doing that, the projects actually cost less to do, and you have greater buying power with your dollar, because you're not paying all those other additional costs. So, all of these policies that we employ here are in line with the best practices, both from DLS, but there are also national and international finance agencies that monitor and advise on these types of policies, and these are in line with that as well. So, when we go to bond rating agencies to say, "We're the city of Beverly. We want to issue debt," they see these policies, they see these practices, and they're more likely to give us a better rating, which translates to lower interest rates. So for the projects we do borrow for, we enjoy a very good interest rate, as opposed to another municipality that may not have these policies in place and may have a worse bond rating. And so, that's how we're saving taxpayer money in the long run through our utilization policies. How was I on time? Was it five, six minutes or so? A little bit more?
Seven, I think, but you said that was in the range? Yep.
Okay.
You were on target.
So I know we're going to talk about a lot of these as we go forward in the, but I wanted to give you all a general overview of kind of what we do and why we do it. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I think, before I have you jump into another letter, Ms. Kent, just any questions for Mr. Ailes on that from councilors? We do have a little time here. Counselor Rand?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I rely on that presentation every year to give me the proper tools and vocabulary to explain free cash. You always manage it in a way that a layperson can really kind of understand the whole process, and I appreciate that. And I wish I had thought of asking you to bring this information before, but I would love to see the breakout of the different categories that make up this year's free cash. So, you know, the sort of difference between unanticipated revenues and what's been turned back from the budget.
Yeah, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Rand. Counselor Housman?
Thank you. So, Mr. Ailes, I appreciate the presentation. I thought it was very useful, and I appreciate it was sort of geared, to a degree, to sort of a layperson's sort of upper-level view of how it works. Whether it's a software program from Tyler Technologies or something like that, I'd love to see something like that on the city website, something that communicates in a more transparent and clear way to the general public, a little bit more about how we manage municipal finances. I don't expect every constituent to go out there and wade, you know, wade through it and try to necessarily understand it, but I think it would be helpful and incumbent upon us to be able to, to be able to say, "Listen, you know, we're trying. We have, we have tools out there that are trying to communicate to those folks who are interested, who want to dig into it. Easy to understand, relatively, easy to understand ways of communicating that." So, I look forward to this continuing conversation we have about how we can get to that point, whether it's through software or website change or whatever. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Housman. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Kent, we have one minute for order 69, under communications from his honor, the mayor.
Order number 69. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request that you approve a budget transfer of $102,000. of $10,500 into the Fire Department budget to fund costs associated with the recently agreed-upon MOA between the City of Beverly and Fire Dispatch Union. The terms of the award cover the periods of FY 2022 through FY 2024. Such the requested transfer will be allocated to pay retroactive pay adjustments back to the start of FY 2022, as well as the adjusted costs through this coming July 31, 2022. With the approval of the city council, $10,500 will be transferred from the Reserve for Union Negotiations 11324/57810. There are sufficient funds available within the reserve accounts to support this transfer. I am attaching for your review the agreed-upon MOA. Please initiate action on this matter at your next city council meeting scheduled for Monday, March 7. This transfer request will require a public hearing be set and held prior to a council vote. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set a public hearing.
Well done. 8:10. Let's call the order of the public hearing on Order 48. Order number 48. City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 7, 2022, at 8:10 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, 3rd floor council chambers, live on BevCam, relative to the transfer of $642,085 from certified free cash into Capital Fund 598. And this was in the newspaper on February 25.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ailes.
Thank you. It's me again. All night.
Actually true.
This transfer is a little bit out of, I wouldn't say it's out of the ordinary, but what we're doing here is this is a project that was previously authorized last fiscal year through a loan order. And we do this strategy for one of two reasons. Either we are in a situation where we're protecting the unreserved fund balance and don't want to take money out of the general fund because we don't want to see a dip in our balance sheet. So in this case, that's what happened here. We were approaching the end of the fiscal year. We needed to get the project done over the summer so we wouldn't disrupt the school year. And so we came before the council asking for a loan authorization. That approval allowed us to enter into a legal contract, even though we didn't spend the money yet. And so by doing that, the mayor was able to sign the contract, and we were able to engage the contractor and get the work done. Now, after the work's been done, we've paid the bills, but now we've got an option. We've got a loan authorization. We can go out to borrow, or what I'm doing here is requesting that we use free cash in lieu of the borrowing. And so that was always the plan back when we came before the previous council in, I think it was June, for this authorization. So now we're just kind of completing the loop of what the plan was at that point. The other thing that could cause us to request a loan order in anticipation of a free cash appropriation would be if we needed to get a project done during that blackout period that I just spoke about. Sometimes that can occur and require us to seek a loan order as well. But this would both rescind the loan order and effectively save the project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. Councilors, any questions or comments on this public hearing? Councilor Bowen.
Thank you. So not a question on the mechanics of the finances, but thank you for that explanation because it helps clarify it. But just in closing out the turf field project, I know there were some questions about disposing of the previous turf field. So I don't know if that impacted the costs at all, or if there's anything you could say about sort of how the closeout of that project went before we finally wrap it up.
Sure. I unfortunately don't have the answer to that, but if it's okay with you, I can have Commissioner Collins, who managed that project, follow up with you. We also had a consultant that helped us manage the project as well, and we can get that back. He can shoot you an email tomorrow or something if he can find some time. Is that okay?
Yep, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All set, Councilor Bowen? Thank you. Councilor Housman.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I'm not sure if you're the right person to be able to answer it, but I know there was some concern around sort of the sustainability impacts of the disposal of the material that was there. And I only know from pretty much what I read in the newspaper about it, but there didn't seem to be a plan by the vendor to, how they were going to dispose of that in hopefully a, you know, less carbon, a more carbon-neutral way? Do you have any information about that, or maybe the mayor has any information about ultimately what happened with the disposal of the materials that were taken out?
Yeah, is that kind of, it's kind of the same question?
Same question.
Yeah, I can make sure Commissioner Collins responds to you all in a, I guess we would email the clerk, and she can distribute it to you.
That would be great.
Is that okay?
Yes, thank you. Councilor Housman, any other question or comment?
Well, no, I was wondering if Irina Akif had any role to play in helping to make sure that that happened, but I'll hear from Mr. Commissioner Collins, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other councilors with questions on this one? Any members of the public who would like to speak on this public hearing? Mr. Perry, would you want to come up and comment on this public hearing at all?
Thank you, Madam President. Very quickly, I would recommend adoption of this proposal. I don't want to repeat everything Bryant said. The only thing I would add to refresh your memories, they originally thought it was about $750,000 when we discussed this last spring, and it's down to $642,000 and change. So that was a good thing. And obviously, by doing this strategy, and I agree with what Bryant just said, I was concerned about it. I thought we were spending down our fund balance at that point. The administration's pretty good about the loan order and kicking into this year, so it kind of evens out that fund balance, which I think is a pretty good strategy. So bottom line to it, I'd recommend it. It's good. It saves us money. Taxpayers don't have to pony up for the loan order.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any final questions or comments on this one? All right. With that, I'll close this public hearing and refer that back to Finance and Property. Ms. Kent, let's go back to Communications from his honor, the mayor. Order 70.
Order number 70. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request that you approve a budget transfer of $113,500 into various municipal department budgets to fund costs associated with the recently settled contract between the City of Beverly and the Beverly Municipal Employees Association. The terms of the contract cover the period of FY 22 through FY 24. As such, this requested transfer will be allocated to pay some retroactive pay adjustments as well as the increased costs for the remainder of FY 2022. The memo of the agreement has been provided to you as attachment to this correspondence. The full amount will be transferred-
Because I made you read so fast.
The full amount will be transferred from the Reserve for Collective Bargaining 11324/57810 to cover these costs. There are sufficient funds available within this reserve account to support this transfer. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the union representatives, as well as all the employee covered with this agreement for bargaining, in good faith and engaging with the negotiating team and meaningful discussion to arrive at this agreement. I know I speak for many when I say that we truly value what you bring to our community, understand the important role you play in our community's greatness. It is much appreciated. I ask the city council to initiate action on this matter at your next public meeting scheduled for Monday, March 7, 2022. This transfer request will require a public hearing be set and held prior to a council vote. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set that public hearing.
Order number 71. Dear Honorable City Council, as you are aware, the Beverly Housing Authority accepted the city's offer to purchase, subject to city council approval, the vacant lots at 14 and 34 Simon Street in the Gloucester Crossing neighborhood for the purpose of converting them to open green space in a play area for the residents of this densely populated area. By Order Number 46 of 2022, the council affirmatively voted this issuing an RFP for such properties will not benefit the city's interests because of the need qualities and location of the Simon Street parcels. In order to proceed with the purchases enclosed, please find an order granting authorization to take all steps necessary on behalf of the city to acquire 14 Simon Street, Beverly, Mass. for a consideration of $200,000, and 34 Simon Street, Beverly, Mass. for consideration of $200,000, including without limitation, executing for each property. A purchase and sales agreement, acceptance of deed, conservation restrictions that meet the requirements of Section 31 to 33, inclusive of Chapter 184, as required by the Community Preservation Act, MGL, Chapter 44B, Section 5B4, and such are the documents necessary to complete the sale. Please note that the Essex County Green Belt Association has expressed an interest in holding the aforementioned conservation restrictions required under the CPA and ECGA staff have advised that they expect ECGA Board of Directors to approve doing so at the March 21, 2022 meeting. I respectfully request that the council take action on this order in connection with its vote on Order Number 66 of 2022, which is the appropriation requested related to the purchase improvements of the properties. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Timing again. As we'll open our 8:20 public hearing on Order Number 49.
Order Number 49. City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 7, 2022, at 8:20 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, 3rd floor council chambers, live on BevCam, relative to the transfer of $1,101,519 from free cash balance to be placed into the city's stabilization fund, and transfer of $224,304 from free cash to be placed in the OPEB trust. And this was in the newspaper on February 25, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Mr. Ailes.
Thank you again. So this request for free cash is a result of our standing policy around free cash certification. There are two components here. The first is a request for a transfer to the stabilization fund. That is a fund that stabilizes the city in the event of an economic downturn or some budgetary or economic pressure that could arise in the future. It's a mechanism that will allow us to be less impacted by those types of recessions that we've seen in the past and such. The policy requires the mayor to submit a request for no less than 10% of the city's certified free cash balance. So that's how that number gets selected. The OPEB portion of this has to do with the city's long-term liability related to, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, but it's effectively the health care of all of our current and future retirees for the city employee and the school department as well. And so every year, we put 2% of our free cash certification into this fund that's managed by the Pension Retirement Investment Trust on our behalf. And to, the thought is that we're beginning to peck away at a very large outstanding liability that the city has, and it's viewed very favorably by the bond rating agencies to engage in such a practice. So that's the request for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Councilors, any questions? Councilor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, what would the balance of the stabilization fund be if we approved this transfer?
Sure. So as of today, prior to this request, the stabilization balance is at $15,791,000 and some change. That represents 10.95% of our annual operating budget. The policy for our stabilization fund is a targeted range between 10% and 15%. So we are within the targeted range on the lower end of that. With this approval, that number would go to $16,903,059, which would represent 11.72% of this year's fiscal budget. But beginning next year, if you assume a 3% budget growth, which may be modest, then it would represent 11.38% of next year's budget.
Thank you.
All set, Councilor Sweeney?
Yes.
Councilor Rotendo.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Ailes, can you tell me what the amount of the OPEB is right now, just for a sobering effect, just to really let people know how much money actually is there? I guess it's just really kind of to put it into perspective that sometimes people don't always realize it either.
So with this transfer, if it's approved this evening, we will have $257,800, roughly. And the overall outstanding liability as of June 30, 2021, which is our most recent valuation, we employ actuarials that come in and value this stuff, the outstanding total OPEB liability is $421,808,987.
Chipping away.
You know, I will also say that, you know, right now, you see every year in the budget an amount that's allocated towards the pension liability. So the way this has progressed is, you know, if you went back, I don't know how long ago, maybe Mr. Perry can help me, but 10 or 20, probably 20 years ago plus, cities didn't really have to squirrel away any money for their pension liability. But then law was enacted that required municipalities to begin putting aside funds to deal with this potential, this real liability that the city has. And so over time, we've paid down the pension liability to a point where we're over 70% funded now. I mean, that's before the stock market started dipping a little bit this past week, but we were in a good place. We're scheduled to be fully funded by 2032, maybe 2033. 33, thank you. Which at that point, you'll have a budget line of about $14 to $15 million that's going into the pension liability annually that can then be diverted into the OPEB liability and begin to peck away more significantly at that very large daunting number.
Can you just answer my second question? So thank you, which was to do with the pension liability. So I appreciate that. Thank you. All set. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rotendo. Other councilors with questions or comments? Councilor Bowen.
Thank you. So I had a question similar to Councilor Sweeney's, just trying to gauge where this puts us in the long term. At some point, if we continue following the policy of putting 10% of free cash into the stabilization fund, you know, we're on a trajectory now. It's been increasing significantly. So kind of where we draw that line and thinking about just where we are right now in terms of services, needs that we have still outstanding to catch up on, whether it's, you know, roads and sidewalks, or some of the things that we've talked about in the ARPA context, you know, $100,000, $200,000 here or there can make a big difference in people's lives. And so I'm very much in favor of the overall financial policy and building up our stabilization fund, but just want to get a sense for how you're thinking about where we are and, you know, is this year or next year a time to catch up on some of the public services we're still playing catch up on since our stabilization fund is so healthy right now?
Yep. So as I said before, the policy that the target range is 10 to 15%. So yes, we're in that range, the lower end. In terms of dollars, that might feel like significant, and it is significant money, right? But that 10 to 15% wasn't just kind of out of the blue. That's based on past recessions and what happened during the last two recession cycles. And what we saw was that state aid, which right now is almost 12 and 1/4% of our budget, dropped by 24% for a period of three years. So if you take that formula and apply it to today's dollars, that's over a $4 and 1/4 million budgetary dip for three consecutive years. So if, as a community, we're committed to the quality services we're providing, it's important to be able to continue to provide that level of quality services even through an economic downturn, right? And so this reserve policy was really designed to do just that. In addition to the state aid, our second, I should, our first largest revenue stream is property taxes. The second largest revenue stream is state aid, like I just said. The third largest revenue stream we have is motor vehicle excise tax. And during the economic downturns, we saw dips of about 15% year over year, and then it would take a few years for that to begin climbing up. So you're really looking, and the value of that, combined with meals and room tax and building permits, which are all economically tied revenue streams, you know, you'd really need to plug the $5 to $6 million shortfall for a period of time. And so this, I'm kind of smiling here because, as weird as this sounds, we had to test this because going into the pandemic, we didn't know what was happening. And we were kind of battening down the hatches and preparing for kind of a next recession. And so in modeling what we had in the reserves, we felt comfortable that we could get through a three- to four-year recession and still come out on the other end. a three- to four-year recession and still come out on the other end with some modest, you know, spending cuts, but we could come out on the other end effectively maintaining our service level through the recession. And so that's kind of the theory behind why we do what we do. The 10% target that we add to it every year is because every year, our budget's growing. And so the proportional share of the backfill that we need to make grows as well. And so if you don't keep pace with the growth of the budget, then you're not able to fill these areas that we're designed to fill with the stabilization fund. So that's theoretically how we do it? Does that answer your question? I mean, I can, were there pieces I didn't answer?
Yes, in that, I mean, I appreciate that explanation and believe it wholeheartedly. My question was more, given all of that, and if we adhere to all of that, and I know we're running up against the next public hearing, so I want to be conscious of that, but just, is there ever going to be a time when we have already kept pace with that growth in our budget, have already built up the stabilization fund faster than our budget has grown, and find ourselves in a year when we can catch up on some of the deferred maintenance from the last recession?
Yes.
Is this that year, is next year that year? How do we know when we're there?
I think you monitor the target areas. Yes, there could be a time where we feel that 10% is too much to be putting there, but keep in mind, we need to keep pace with a growing budget. The other, well, I'll stop there because I know we're running out of time, but I'm happy to engage in a much, you know, more in-depth conversation with you, either at this forum or offline, really. Thanks.
I think because we haven't gotten to the public comment on this one, or Mr. Perry, I'd like to entertain a motion to recess this public hearing to 9 o'clock, so to the end of our list, and we can pick this back up before we refer it to committee. Is there a motion to recess it?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 9-0, so we will recess the public hearing on Order 49, pick it back up at 9 o'clock, and we will open public hearing, our 8:30 public hearing on Order Number 50.
Order Number 50, City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 7th, 2022 at 8:30 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor Council Chambers, live on BEV CAM relative to the transfer of free cash balance of $1,500,000 to be placed in the City Hall Rehabilitation Capital Project Fund. And this was in the newspaper on February 25th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Mr. Ailes again.
Sure. So the request, as Ms. Kent read, is to begin the process of rehabilitating City Hall and the former police station next door. This has long been a project that's been contained in our capital improvement plan, which, the most recent version you have this evening. And so this first phase of the project, similar to how we've conducted some of our other large capital projects, is to begin with a cash infusion, which allows us and authorizes the administration to enter into contracts with the owner's project manager, a design firm, which the owner project manager will help us to select, and potentially, depending upon what type of project we undertake, whether it's a design bid build or a CM at risk construction project, we may also bring on board the construction manager, the construction firm, earlier on in the process to help with some of the design components of the project. But this funding will allow us to begin the feasibility study, do a needs assessment, and begin doing some preliminary design, schematic design work, which ultimately is what's needed in order to put an accurate price tag on the total project.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Are there councillors with questions or comments on this public hearing? Councillor Rand, and then Councillor Bowen, please.
Thank you. I guess I just have one question. I want to confirm that is this part of this 1.5 million is to include the cost of the owner's project manager that is looking, who is looking at a number of buildings in the city altogether? That's wrapped up in this project as well, correct? Or this funding?
No, we have bid or requested responses from firms for both this project that's before you, as well as we received some state funding, a grant that you all, I believe, received a couple sessions ago for the McPherson Youth Center. So between these two, this and the grant, we'll be able to engage an OPM firm. It is not the OPM firm that we have used for our previous projects. It is a different one.
Okay, that helps. So I was confused. This funding is completely separate from the funding that established that hiring, basically, of the OPM?
Yeah, this is a completely new project. This would be the first dime spent on it.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Rand. Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. So I guess my question is really around the amount rather than the purpose, because I think, and Mr. Perry gave us some great outlines in the memo about sort of why renovation makes sense now, what we can expect to get out of it, all of that. But just trying to think through this specific amount at this specific time in this specific form, anticipating a very large, multi-year project, it's already built into our financial forecast in the debt schedule as a project that the city would propose borrowing for, if that makes sense to me. So I'm curious, I guess, how much this front-loading of cash would save us in the long term in financing and in time? And also what we could potentially get for less at this time, knowing that, you know, I was looking sort of for a comparison, the money that we received a few weeks back to kick off the McPherson Youth Center project was a couple hundred thousand dollars. This is 1.5 million. You know, would love to think about, this is not just kind of a yes/no question, it's also what are we not spending on by spending money here? So could we, for example, spend $500,000 of free cash front-loading this project to get it up and running this year and have a million dollars in free cash for some of the other priorities, like roads and sidewalks that, you know, we saw on the screen can be free cash uses, have been in the past, hear a lot about? So just, you know, definitely agree, this has been a longstanding priority, definitely agree now's the time to tackle it, really nervous about that number, given particular approach and what it might save us versus what it might cost us in lost opportunities. It's kind of a question, kind of a comment.
Yeah, I think there's a few questions in there. And also, let me say, I appreciate the thoughtful questions that you had sent me earlier when you first received the communication, very thoughtful. Hopefully, we can, you know, talk about a few of them this evening, but some of them were just mentioned. Let me address first the cost avoidance. Typically, when the city goes to borrow funds for these types of projects, there is a short-term borrowing, referred to as a ban, a bond anticipation note, that tends to occur and acts as a cash infusion into the project, so that you're able to basically, it's like a construction loan, okay? And then at the closeout of the project, when we know all the costs and everything is final and it's all done, then we, in many cases, at that point, will permanently borrow what remains for the outstanding balance of the debt. A typical issuing cost, if it were to just be by itself, on any borrowing, a permanent borrowing, you're talking probably about $80,000 to go to market, right? These are municipally traded bonds, the SEC gets involved, the IRS gets involved, we hire attorneys, we market them, big banks come in, they bid on them. It's expensive business. We get rated, all of that. A good rule of thumb on a million and a half dollars, I did some quick math, is that for each year you carry a ban, you're paying 30 grand in interest. So a typical construction project, we might be, have this open for about three years before we permanently borrowed, so it's about 90,000. Every time you reissue a ban, you incur additional issuing costs as well. They're not as significant as the permanent borrowing, but they are significant. So those are kind of the upfront costs. Once we permanently bond in three years, at a 4% interest rate, this type of project would be for 30 years, it's like a mortgage. So if you did a 4% for 30 years on a million and a half dollars, you're going to pay an extra $936,000 over those 30 years in interest costs. So there is significant benefit to front-loading projects with cash, if you're able to do it and still be budgetarily responsible and keep an eye on your balance sheet and all that stuff. So we always do try to do that when it makes sense. The larger projects, we do build capacity within our forecasting, within our debt models, to layer in debt so that we maintain a debt budget consistent with our policies. We like it to be around 7% of the operating budget. It can go up as high as nine or so, but this is right there in the sweet spot, and we have school debt falling off for some of the older school buildings that the mayor mentioned earlier this evening, that the debt's going away with those. So now's the time to begin layering in debt for some of these larger projects without spiking the budget or creating this budgetary pressure that we want to avoid. So that's a sense of the costs that we would avoid. I believe you, let me see here, you had a couple of questions, so... Well, maybe you could refresh me because I, is there another question in there that I didn't touch on?
Well, I was going to say, Mr. Ailes, if it would be okay, I think I'm going to pause us here on this one too, especially because I think I noticed we do have some neighbors here who I suspect are here to hear us talk about Simon Street. And so I would entertain a motion to recess this public hearing to 9:10.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 9-0. So we'll recess this public hearing on Order 50 to 9:10, and we will open our 8:40 public hearing on Order Number 66.
Order Number 66, City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 7th, 2022 at 8:40 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor Council Chambers, live on BEV CAM relative to the transfer of $325,000 of the city's free cash for the remainder of the purchase price, as well as cost of improvements to the two lots at 14 Simon Street and 34 Simon Street. And this was published in the newspaper on February 25th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Mr. Mayor, are you first up on this one, it looks like?
Sure. Give Mr. Ailes just a break for a minute. So this and the hearing after it are back-to-back on Simon Street. I just want to remind us all that, well, first, we've got some of our neighbors here, we got Carol Dinsmore and Allison Dudley, both from Gloucester Crossing, both very active in making this happen, and we've got Rick Marciano, a Ward 3 resident and friend of Gloucester Crossing. So they've all been active throughout the conversation with many of us. And I mean, this has all been very public. We've had these conversations here, we've had them in many different venues, and we're all incredibly excited that, you know, we agreed to go after both of these parcels. The Housing Authority RFP'd them, we were able to get appraisals done, which got us appraised prices of $200,000 on each parcel. We submitted a response to their RFP, and lo and behold, we were the only responses. So what's before you in this public hearing and the next one, a request to, you know, to move money or to approve money to cover the cost, and then you just read the request to approve the purchase itself. So this first one is 325,000 in free cash to cover half the cost of the purchases, $200,000, half the cost of the, the two separate purchases are each $200,000, so $200,000 here, partnered up with $200,000 that the CPC has proposed to you that you'll get in the next public hearing. And then as Mr. Ailes can give you a little more insight, there's an additional $120,000 we're asking for some of the improvements to the space. Actually, that's probably all that. Why don't you give whatever detail you need? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The additional $125,000 above the 400 purchase, $400,000 purchase price is to cover improvements of the lots. It'll also cover some soil testing that's needed to be done, as well as some legal costs. There are some small kind of closing costs and stuff we need to handle as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Councillors, any questions or comments on this one? Councillor Rotendo.
Thank you, Madam President. I just found out that it's actually part of Ward 1 now, so I'm looking forward to the project. Yes, you get to deal with me. But I am looking forward to that, and my question is, I know we're looking for money, additional money towards the equipment and stuff. Is that sufficient amount, or will you be looking elsewhere for more money if needed?
So this is the amount that we committed to in the accepted bid. We committed to, I believe it was slightly under $100,000 in improvements, was our estimate, and that was what was awarded. So if we are successful in obtaining some other funds, it would just be added on top.
So when that bid was made, was that prior to the cost of goods going up considerably in the last, how many months? And like I said, I'm playing catch up right now on the project.
Yeah, early January the bids went in.
Last month, a month and a half ago, so it wasn't like last year that you were looking at?
No, it was relatively recent.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councillor Rotendo. Councillor Crowley.
Sure. So first of all, I just wanted to thank everybody that is here, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for, you know, helping us as far as spearheading this and getting this done. I think it's a great big value add to those neighborhoods, and same thing within Ward 3, so definitely highly support this. The only, not so much a question, the only thing I would ask is that we continue to, as expedient as much as we put around this to buy these two lots, I think that area within itself, we have those two lots now, then we have Gage Park and stuff like that, is that we continue to stay aggressive within additional funding or whatever it is to improve those three parcels. I think together that we do that in one big area, I think, when we're going to help a complete section, but some more great open space and stuff for the city. So I just ask that we continue to, you know, put forth the effort and everything else like that that we've had so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Crowley. Councillor St. Hilaire.
Yeah, I just wanted to applaud you, Mayor, for taking this project on. I think it was the right thing to do, and it's important to protect that, that open space, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you very much, Councillor St. Hilaire.
I just say, Madam President, I thank you both, but, you know, first, the neighborhood's been fantastic, and your predecessor, councillor, former councillor Ames, and you, councillor Crowley, you've both been great on this. So it's really, and all the at-larges. I mean, everybody's been, you know, really focused in on the reality that this neighborhood has very little open space and that this is really kind of a generational opportunity, you know, when were two parcels going to come open like that? So, you know, we've all, we all got there together in a really good way, and I think your point, councillor Crowley, of making sure that the improvements come quickly once the, you know, once the property is in our hands. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Housman.
Yes, thank you. Well, the mayor sold my thunder a little bit. I just want to make sure while we're making recognitions on the work on this project, that councillor Ames, former councillor Ames, give her a shout out, because I know she worked really hard and advocated really hard for this to happen.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much, councillor Housman. That's absolutely true. And councillor Ames, if you're watching on BEV CAM, thank you for your work, and thank you to many of the residents who are here too. I think it's really important to note, this is a project that really was a grassroots project started by residents, and some of them are here with us tonight, and that's really exciting to see that happen. Other questions or comments from councillors? Are there members of the public who would like to speak in this public hearing on Order So if you just come on up, and I know you know, I know you know this process, but...
Dupreeh O., Rick Marciano, 141 McKay Street.
Thank you very much. Name and address, that was perfect.
Yes. Just so the, some of the public doesn't know, these parks have existed for over a quarter of a century, since 1991. And the Beverly Housing Authority opened these up to the neighbors. They were given a grant for $40,500, and the big, the larger lot was 70 feet by 70 feet approximately, and the smaller one, 60 by 60. The smaller one at 14, that was a local, the residents got together and they had, they've had a great time there for, again, over a quarter of a century. And they recently, within the years, we know, they shut, they shut that one down. The other one, the other park further down at 34 Simon Street, they, about four to five years ago, my understanding is, is they went in there and they cut all the apparatuses that they had out there for the children, and then they, you know, they locked the gate up. So it's been a while, but the main one, they were, they were still being used. So this is going to revitalize these areas beyond a reasonable doubt. The other part that's not being looked at, well, it is, but there's, it provides 12 to 13 parking spaces for that neighborhood, the way the parks, the parks are already set up, the fences are already there, and they're, it's a safety-type fence where a portion comes out approximately five feet apart, where you can have children in there, but the cars coming in, they're going to be protected from that area. So it was very well put together back in the, around 1991. So it's a, it's a great asset to hold on to, you know, we're taking it over from the, from the state, basically, Beverly Housing Authority, and I think the neighbors are going to be very happy with those parks coming alive again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marciano.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marciano. Name an address for the record, please.
Hello, Allison Dudley, seven Beckford Street. I live in Ward Three in Gloucester Crossing, and I just wanted to appeal to the council to approve these funds. I applaud the Beverly Housing Authority for working with the city, and the mayor, and Darlene, and Chelsea, and all the people in the city. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but thank you for making it all happen. Brian, as well. So I just wanted to appeal to you all to approve the, these cash funds. As you know, the CPC funds had been approved. I know that's the next hearing, but your support of these funds is gonna be critical so that this project can come to fruition. And as councillor Crowley has mentioned, you know, I think it's gonna be very important for the community to see that our neighborhood is being prioritized, and that the city is really taking an interest in saying, you know, that our neighborhood matters, and improvements are, you know, should happen, especially with COVID, as we know the importance of public space. I myself live between two train tracks, the two commuter rail lines. I have a tiny backyard. And find, you know, these open spaces are just critical in our neighborhood. So just wanna appeal to you all to approve the funds, and thank you in advance.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dudley. And I do want to recognize that Chelsea Zakis from the City Planning Department is here with us tonight. Ms. Zakis, thanks for being here. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak in this public hearing? Ms. Zakis.
Hello, everybody. Chelsea Zakis, Associate Planner here in the Planning Department. Just to add from a planning perspective, I do staff the Open Space and Recreation Committee, and the Open Space and Recreation Committee is responsible for updating the city's open space and recreation plan. And back in two thousand fifteen, through public process, they did identify as a goal from that plan to acquire and preserve open spaces and parks in the more urbanized areas of the city. So I just wanted to remind you all of that, that that is a goal that was in the two thousand fifteen version of the plan. We are in the process of updating that plan, and that will likely carry forward into the future, that we wanna preserve these spaces. So just wanted to add that from a planning perspective, and thank you all very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zakis. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this public hearing? Mr. Perry, did you want to say anything briefly on this one? I'm letting it run a little.
Very briefly. Madam President, I would recommend adoption of this proposal. It conforms to financial policies for using free cash for this type of a one-time expenditure. You certainly have the capacity with the free cash certification to afford it. And I shouldn't editorialize, but I think over spaces from a policy perspective is a really good idea, and I'd recommend its adoption.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Any final questions or comments on this public hearing? With that, I'll close the public hearing on order sixty-six. Refer that back to the committee on Finance and Property to take action this evening. And I will open our eight-fifty public hearing on order sixty-seven. Ms. Kent.
Order number sixty-seven of the City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, eight-fifty P. M. City Hall, one-ninety-one Cabinet Street, third floor, council chambers, Beverly, Mass., relative to the CPA recommendation for out-of-cycle funding relative to the acquisition by the city of two vacant parcels located at fourteen Simon Street and thirty-four Simon Street, Gloucester Crossing Pocket Parks. For the purpose of acquiring, preserving, and enhancing passive and active recreational space, the CPC has recommended the city council fund the Gloucester Crossing Pocket Parks project in the amount requested of two-hundred-thousand dollars. And this was in the newspaper on February twenty-third.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Mr. Ailes.
Sure. Very simply, this is the other piece to the public hearing we just had. This is the funding request from the Community Preservation Committee for two-hundred thousand dollars to augment the three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand that we just heard about.
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry?
I just want to make sure, in asking your support for this, that we make sure we thank our Community Preservation Committee. And Marilyn McCrory, one of the members, is here tonight. They do great work all the time, as you well know, and the fact that they took this on in a very timely way was extremely helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. McCrory, is there anything that you wanted to say on behalf of the CPC? Not to put you on the spot, but if you'd like a moment, please. And thank you for being here with us tonight.
My pleasure, Marilyn McCrory, Tulavet Court, Beverly. I'm a member of the Open Space Committee and the Open Space Committee representative on the CPC. But I wanted to thank the Housing Authority for making this opportunity to acquire these parcels available, and to thank the city for jumping at the opportunity and working, listening to the residents and working with the residents, to act on this opportunity. We haven't seen that many open space projects come through the CPC, so it was really exciting this year to see two of them, or three of them, the two parcels that we're talking about tonight, and then Moraine Farm a few weeks ago. But, you know, this, this project hit all the buttons in the open space plan, or many of them, particularly the one that Chelsea mentioned, to develop, to take advantage of open space opportunities in more urbanized areas of the city. And, you know, this, this project, or the application, was very well put together. It had a lot of, I've never seen so many letters of support. I think there were ten letters attached to this application. So there's, there's very enthusiastic support for the project, and I hope you will consider approving the recommendation from, which was unanimous from the CPC. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCrory. Councillor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd first like to echo the gratitude expressed by other councillors to the mayor, CPC, the residents of Gloucester Crossing, as well as councillor, to councillor Crowley and former councillor Ames. My one question, and, you know, I do believe this is a worthwhile use of the funding, as obviously the CPC unanimously recommended it. My question, and this, Mr. Ailes is for you, from a balance perspective. I know that there was the one-point-one million dollar Moraine Farm purchase that was recently approved using CPC funding. We have this request before us, and then roughly seven-hundred-eighty-thousand dollars worth of projects that the CPC has approved through their typical funding round. Obviously, those are taken together. That's a pretty notable amount of spending. Can you elaborate on where we stand from a balance in this fund, as well as what can be expected for the annual regeneration of the funding, just to get a better picture of where things stand?
Sure.
You know, just, just to help him on that, because he knows the bottom-line numbers. As Ms. McCrory said, it'd been a number of years since we come forward with an open space proposal. So that ten percent each year that has to go into each category had been building on the open space account. So there was roughly about eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand in that account.
Okay.
Went towards the Moraine, and, you know, we'll go towards these if you folks approve it. And then I know Mr. Ailes has got some numbers on the overall.
This is the letter that you sent, so the paper agreed it at the February seventeenth.
So the two hundred would come out of this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Shamps helped me with some numbers here, who helps staff the CPC, and she's a great resource for the city. But it looks that after this appropriation, assuming it gets approved, that there would be seven-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars remaining among the different categories. Now, annually, we budget, and it comes before the city council during, during the fall, early, late summer, early fall, an annual amount of about nine-hundred to a million dollars, depending upon the state match.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councillor Sweeney. Other councillors with questions or comments? Councillor Rotendo.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question, regards to, I understand the whole total price tag. Was there a reason why we didn't go for more money on the CPC as opposed to less on the free cash? I mean, it's really a balancing sheet of two-hundred and three-twenty-five and what, you know, vice versa?
Yes. Thanks, councillor, thanks for the question. In going before the CPC for the Moraine Farm request, and recognizing that we were very like, well, hopefully going to come back on Simon Street if successful in the RFP process, and recognizing that together that was a pretty big chunk for one year, even with the fact that there'd been a buildup in the, in the open space balance. At that time going for Moraine, I had said to the members of the CPC that if we were successful with Simon Street, our plan was to ask for half of it through CPC and come up with the other half. And so free cash has seemed the best way to, best place to look for that.
So it was your choice to go in that direction. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councillor Rotendo. I'm going to actually pause this public hearing just so we can reopen the nine o'clock hearing on order number forty-nine, and I would entertain a motion to recess that to nine-oh-five.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor. Thank you. Motion carries nine-zero, and so we will close the hearing on order forty-nine, recess it to nine-oh-five, and pick up with other comments or questions councillors might have on this public hearing on order forty-seven, sixty-seven. Are there members of the public who would like to speak on this public hearing, which is order sixty-seven, which is the CPA funding for one of the Simon Street properties? Mr. Perry, our budget analyst, would you want to weigh in on this one at all?
Thank you, Madam President. It's, I would recommend adoption as well. I agree, Mr. Sweeney raises a good point. It got my attention. I mean, we have drained some money down this year at it. But, you know, it's, it's a cyclical thing, in my view, with open space, and the opportunities don't present themselves all the time. So there are times where you have to probably get aggressive in certain years, and maybe not so as aggressive. But the beauty of where we're at with our free cash and our reserves allows for us to augment this above and beyond what's there. So, bottom line to it, I would recommend the adoption of the proposal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Councillors, any last questions or comments on this public hearing? Uh, no, you can still come on up, Ms. Dudley. Not too late.
Allison Dudley, seven Beckford Street. I'm a member of the Open Space Committee for Ward Three, and I just wanted to express my support for this funding as well. Just being on the Open Space Committee, I think this is the only project right now that we're working on in Ward Three. The rest of the projects are elsewhere. Again, this idea of prioritizing urbanized areas, it's a po, two-pocket parks. They're very small, but they're gonna have a very big impact. So I'm just appealing to you all, again, to really think about, you know, funding this as well. And thanking all of you, again, for your support, and, you know, for Madam President, and councillor, all of your, I don't know, all of your names still learning the titles, councillor Bowen and councillor Crowley for attending the Simon Street, coming to those spaces to actually see them, and of course, the mayor and the Planning Department, and all the people who made it happen. It's a village. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dudley. Councillors, any last questions or comments? All right. With that, I will close our public hearing on order number sixty-seven. We'll refer that back to the committee on Legal Affairs to take action on that this evening. Ms. Kent, let's go to order seventy-two, communications from his honor, the mayor, and see if we can get that one in before nine-oh-five.
Order number seventy-two, dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a one-thousand-three-hundred-dollar grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Project Drug Stewardness Program. This grant funding will be utilized for costs surrounding the management and disposal of unwanted household-generated opiates in the medicine collection receptacle in the Beverly Police Station lobby. Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, requires both city council and mayor approval. Before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on March seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. K. Hill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the committee on Legal Affairs. Seventy-three, please.
Order number seventy-three, dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly Emergency Management Task Force has been awarded a three-thousand-dollar hazardous material emergency preparedness grant from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. These grant refunds will be used for hazardous materials, planning, training, and exercise activities with a goal of developing, improving, and successfully carrying out emergency plans. Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, requires both city council and mayor approval. Before any grant to the city can be expended for its prescribed purpose, I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on March seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. K. Hill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the committee on Finance and Property. That's perfect timing to reopen the public hearing, the nine-oh-five public hearing on order number forty-nine. If I recall correctly, we were coming to the portion of that hearing that was comments from the public. Does that, does that match anyone else's memory? Okay. Are there members of the public who would like to speak on order number forty-nine? Yes. Mrs. Visnick, name and address for the record at the podium, please.
Order Visnick thirty-nine, Woodbury Lane. I think I usually come with a prepared statement, so I'm gonna thank you in advance for tolerating my wandering thoughts. Like Mr. Ailes, I woke up pretty early this morning, and it's all I can do is stay awake here in the back row. I love hearing this conversation. I love hearing the CPA funds. I love hearing that we're gonna spend CPA funds on, on Moraine Farms, and the fact that we have money in different buckets. We're in fantastic financial shape. I love all of that. I love that we're prepared to tolerate a downturn. However, I think I want to encourage all of you to really think in a much bigger picture about how we do our forecasting, and how it is that we get money in these various buckets, and specifically the stabilization fund. And when we talk about economic downturns, it wasn't too long ago, when I was standing here, and I was almost begging you, what can we do with the money in the stabilization fund that we have today? Because so many of our residents are hurting after two years of COVID. We talk about that as a rainy day fund, and I believe what I said at that time, the last time I stood here on this topic, was we're going through a nor'easter, a two-year nor'easter, not just a rainy day. And so if not the financial policies, as Ms. Bowen was saying, you know, we're going closer and closer to the upper end of, of the suggested range of the balance of that fund, if not the policy of how much to put in or whether to put it in, which you guys can actually vote to overturn your own policy on any given year, what about talking, how can it be spent? I believe the last time I was here, Mr. Perry said, basically, you can't. I believe, Ms. Feldman, I believe you asked him, what can we spend it on? And the answer was, we can't. So it's maddening to me to think about having that pool of money, and it's the exact opposite of all the other wonderful conversations we've had tonight about the fantastic things we're gonna be able to do for our city based on some pools of money that we have gathered. But we have this very large pool of money that seems like we can't ever spend it. And so I just want to urge all of you to think about that. Think about the big picture. Think about how it is that we're forecasting, such that we have the variances that give us this much free cash at the end of every year, that then allow us to take a big chunk of it. Because over a million dollars is, is a very big chunk. And we could be doing a lot of different things. And there are a lot of other things in the city that I'm sure all of you have heard from your constituents they would like to have done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Visnick. And I was remiss for not recognizing, although I know you were here tonight speaking as a member of the public, but that you were here earlier, also as our Ward Six School Committee member. So thank you for being here with us this evening. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak on this public hearing on order number forty-nine? Mr. Perry, would you like to make any comments on this one?
Thank you, Madam President. So the request before you is consistent with our financial policies, as you've already heard. I do recommend the adoption of the proposal. I would like to make a few comments along with councillor Bowen. We've had some phone conversations about this, and some were consistent with Ms. Visnick as well. As Mr. Ailes indicated, if you... if you if you support this, we our policies say we want to get to ten to fifteen percent of the general fund, and this will get it, I think, up to, he said, eleven point nine percent if we adopt this tonight. So it's still, we're getting close to the middle. We're not at the top. My view, I can always speak as your budget analyst, my opinion to you is that I think this is something to talk about in terms of whether we should or shouldn't spend it at some point, but I would be more comfortable talking about it when we get up to the high thirteens and the fourteen percent level. That's my opinion. I think it's important that we maintain that. It helps protect the bond rating. A lot of people don't understand that by having these kind of reserves in place there, and if we have a better bond rating, we have cheaper loan orders, and it saves the taxpayers money by doing that. So it's important to do that. With regard to the OPEB Trust Fund, I haven't seen the audit report. I'm gonna beat up Mr. Ailes over lunch tomorrow to try to get more of that information out of him, but it is probably around four hundred million dollars. We're never gonna get there. If all the governments in the country had to do it, they would go bankrupt. So what the rating agencies is looking for is for us to make a contribution. It shows a commitment to it, and we'll probably still do mostly pay as you go, but it's a good idea, again, to protect the bond rating, and we have received favorable reports from state and impowers with regard to how we handle in that. And again, I urge you to adopt the proposal. With regard to Ms. Visnick, if I said you can't spend the money, if I said it, I apologize. I don't recall it. Maybe I did. As I get older, I forget things, I guess, but you obviously can spend the money. It requires a two-thirds vote of this body, and of course, the mayor would have to initiate action on that. I'm a firm believer, I am conservative in nature, when I've been saying that all along. I'm not a secret to anybody about this. I remind you, the last year, when we were beginning the throes of the pandemic, when we were doing the budget last year, we tapped a million dollars of this to protect the budget. And even though we got very fortunate with the way the money came in, we were able to put it back, if you will, which we did do, which was a wide decision. At that point in time, nobody knew what was going on. And I can tell you, I know of AAA communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who laid teachers off, police officers, firefighters off, because they were not prepared. They did not have the type of stabilization fund that the city of Beverly has. And it's an awful thing to lay off schoolteachers, or cops, or fire, whatever it is, you know, employees, public works employees. We were protected. It's an insurance policy. I'm a strong believer, we should continue the path we're on, keep going forward. I am a firm believer that we are successful in the things that we're doing because of our financial forecasting methodologies, of the way we do our budgets, the way I send you those quarterly budget to actuals, which I think not, I never get a response from anybody, which is fine, I get it, but we I monitor what's going on. Mr. Ailes watches this. We are in excellent financial shape. And my message to you as your budget analyst is to stay the course. I realize you get stress, and people legitimately have good comments and commentary that we should tap this for various needs, and I understand that, but I still believe that we should stay that course. However, if we get up around thirteen and a half to fourteen percent of the of the percentage of the stabilization in relationship to the budget, then I agree. I think we should begin having a dialogue about what to do with those funds, and I think that's important to understand that. But again, I'm pleased as your budget analyst, you have no financial troubles. We're in great shape, and it's wonderful that you as city councilors and this mayor has an opportunity to discuss the chance to do capital expenditure projects. Many other communities can't do it. Because of the way we do things here, we have, we're lucky to have the conversation. Now the new challenge is, what's the priorities? What do you want over versus other things, which is hard to discuss. But having said that, I hope that answers some of your questions, counselor. And again, I would recommend adoption of the proposal by the mayor. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I see there are counselors with their hands raised, but I need to pause this public hearing so that I can reopen the nine-ten recess public hearing on order number fifty and entertain a motion to recess that to nine twenty.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. So we'll recess public hearing on order number fifty to nine twenty and resume the public hearing on order number forty-nine. And I saw Councilor Feldman and then Councilor St. Hope. Call her, please.
Thank you. I'd like to, I just wanted to mention two things, because I know I have questioned and asked about this line item before.
So I'm gonna get the phone?
I need to phone a friend. No.
The hour's late.
So I just, I did want some clarity around some of the things that you had just said, and because I know I have brought up questioning this fund before. When we did discuss that transfer or that kind of earmarking of the million plus when we weren't sure what was going on with COVID and whatnot, you did tell me that our bond rating actually would not be affect negatively impacted if we did end up using that money. So I just, I do question, to some extent, the the argument that it would negatively impact our bond rating to the point where we would be looking at it impacting our constituents. So I just, I, we keep saying that, the bond rating, the bond rating. I just, I guess I, it would be helpful to know what actually with hard numbers would negatively impact the bond rating if at one time, we're gonna say, one million dollars spent from it would not negatively impact the bond rating. But now we're saying that if we don't put an additional one point three million into it, it might negatively impact the bond rating. That's an almost two point five million swing in terms of bond rating. So I just.
Yeah. Let's see if I can clarify this, okay? If you don't put money, these are opinions now. I'm not the bond rating agency. I can only give you my experience, okay? I mean, if you didn't, it's the policy that's in place and the stabilization fund in the aggregate, in my view. As Mr. Ailes said, we have sixteen odd million dollars or something like that in the stabilization fund. That's what impacts. If you don't put one point one in, I don't think it's gonna help it or hurt it. It continues the concept that the rating agencies like to see continuity. They like to see, you know, your policies in place. And when you have the capacity to do that, those are the things they're looking for. So I would say to you, it's the continuity and the overall picture of it. I mean, when I got here, a little over five years ago, we had, I don't know, three or four million in there. And I think since then, we've, you can see how much we put in there, and I could be off in my numbers a little bit here, but the concept of that has allowed for two increase, among other things, of course, two bond rating increases since I've been here. And this is a part of that equation. So if we took out the million dollars, it's the quantity of the amount. No, if you took out a million, I don't think it would hurt it. I don't think it's gonna help or hurt it by putting another million in this year, which we're doing, but it's the whole aggregate of having that sixteen to seventeen million in there that I believe that state and impowers is looking for. I hope that answers your question.
It does. And then to follow up that kind of, maybe Mr. Ailes might be a better person to answer this, I'm not sure. I guess my question is, I did ask, what can we use this for? And when we talk about if there would be a recession, what I need, I'm trying to get my head around, like, how, because I know it can't, we can't say there's a tax abatement for everyone. And that's, I'm just trying to figure out what would be the actual use of that fund during a recession?
You can, let's talk about the legalities of, you can use this fund for any legal appropriation allowed by state law, anything. It requires a two-thirds vote of this body. If you want to give pay rate, legally, you could give out pay raises. I would never advise it, but for any legal authorization, you can use this fund. However, we have policies that dictate or suggest to you, and policies are not requirements. They're policies. You can break from them. You don't have to do them, but our policies indicate you use it for like emergency situations or downturns in the economy or one-time expenditures. That's good financial practice. So there's a difference here. But you can legally use it for anything you want if the mayor initiates it and if two-thirds of you vote for it.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll set, Councilor Feldman?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor St. Hilaire.
Yeah, so I think while we're on this topic, you know, I just, I wanted to say, you know, I've been a supporter of Mr. Ailes and Mayor Cahill's approach on the finances for some time. And I think, you know, I was on the council when we started to build up the stabilization fund together. So, you know, with that said, though, I think, you know, it might be a good time to revisit, and I'm certainly open to discussion. You know, Mr. Ailes, I, we're coming into budget season. Will we get some sort of analysis of the impact of the pandemic and kind of how we weather the storm and what that looks like? Is that part of, can we get that as part of your presentation?
Well, budgetarily, there was minimal, if any, impact to the city's operations.
We got CARES money, and we're talking about ARPA money.
Oh, yeah, of course. We can provide some of that. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. And while I'm at it, I'd like to, I think Council Bowen had a motion to free cash balance transfer for road and sidewalk repair. I'd like to second that if I could and just say, you know, to Mr. Perry's point, you know, obviously, it's the mayor who can initiate spending. So I think very open to discussion, but at some point, you know, there's a plan and we've got to decide, you know, where we are here. So definitely worth talking about.
Thank you. I'll set, Councilor St. Hilaire.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to pause this public hearing one more time so that we can reopen the public hearing recessed to nine twenty on order fifty, and I would entertain a motion to recess that to nine thirty-five.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero. So we'll close, or sorry, recess the public hearing on order fifty to nine thirty-five, and we'll resume the public hearing on order forty-nine. Councilor Houseman, I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is an important conversation to have every time this comes up. And we have it every, every time it comes up, for just the important kinds of reasons that are being asked about and pointed out. We certainly are in a different place financially as a city than we were when we started these policies and started implementing them. So, you know, I, I'm glad the conversation is taking place, and I'm heartened that the conversation is taking place. I wanna, I guess I want to reflect and, and, you know, anyone jump in as you think about the various factors that I'm about to toss out as to whether or not they sort of hold water as bearing on this conversation. So I agree with Ms. Visnick that, actually, I guess I would see her nor'easter and raise her a hurricane. You know, we are living in a world of emergencies. What we have not typically had, and I'm not gonna know the numbers that Mr. Ailes referred to, so I'm gonna refer to them generally, which is that when we've had recessions in the past, and we've seen state aid go down, and we've had to, certainly when Mayor Scanlon was here and early in this administration's, you know, the question of, would we have to lay off folks? That was a real thing. And, you know, there were conversations, lots of people lined up on both sides of the argument about whether we'd have to close down Hannah as a school. There were a lot of conversations when we were not in the kind of condition that we are in today. And the policies get us to a place, and maybe I should say, following the policies, get us to a place where we can have this kind of conversation instead of that kind of conversation. So trying to put in perspective without taking the position on, you know, funding this or not funding this for the moment, let me just say a couple of different things. When we have had recessions in the past, they were what I would call a normal recession, okay? A normal setback, a normal correction in the market. To Ms. Visnick's point, this is not a normal setback. This is not a normal recession. We have just improved contracts for our various different union bargaining, different union bargaining units, which range, I think, between two and two and a half to maybe point seven five maybe in some instances. But right now, we have inflation running the highest it has been in fifty years, seven, eight, even nine percent. That's in fifty years, okay? So we're not, you know, so when we look back at more recent recessions, we're not looking back fifty years. So we're looking at a, a contracts that when they come up for renegotiation, I don't know where inflation will be then, but the purchasing power of those contracts are not keeping up with inflation that we have today. We have not through, and the reason we have that inflation in part is due to supply chain disruptions, which, by the way, we also have never seen. Let's go back fifty years, let's say. And another thing we haven't seen in at least fifty years, I'll just sort of use that as a hypothetical bookmark, is another thing which caused our current inflation, which is the flooding in an unprecedented, never before in our country's history, maybe except during World War Two, the flooding of money from the federal government back to individuals through the CARES Act, the ARPA Act, I don't know the acronym for the school, the school.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We have not had those kinds of things in the past. And so when we have faced recessions in the past where the money in the stabilization fund would otherwise could have been tapped or would have been tapped, in this case, we have this enormous flood of money. I mean, I remember when COVID hit and the economy shut down, it went to zero, basically. You know, I didn't, you know, Mr. Perry and I had this conversation. We were even sure that the money we had in the station stabilization fund at that point was gonna be near enough for what seemed to be just an enormous catastrophe. And, and so we're facing some unprecedented weather, to use Ms. Visnick's analogy, but we're also facing unprecedented funding from the federal government, which has flowed through the state and down to the local level. So I'm not, I'm not, so I mean, I think the question of, should we spend this million dollars or not, or should we put it into stabilization fund is appropriate. What I would say is that right now, we have another unprecedented experience that started two weeks ago, which is war in Europe, which we haven't seen in eighty years. We, and in the last two weeks, we've had a ten percent correction in the in the stock market. And, you know, there's a talk of whether or not we will have an oil embargo. You know, the money that we have right now in these various different acts that have come to us from the federal government are not gonna last. But make no mistake that what we're seeing right now, sort of globally, may well presage a recession in our near future, where this money that we're talking about, you know, from these various, you know, CARES, ARPA, and so forth, may or may not be available, but won't be available down the road. So I, this is an important conversation to have about whether to fund as is being requested by the administration. And I very much understand and, you know, don't have a problem with the, with the, you know, the advocacy around, hey, maybe this is a time to, you know, spend that on services. But I just want to caution the council that there's a reason the policies are there. The budget does go up, and we do try to match the increase in the budget with a respective, you know, pro rata increase in the stabilization fund. So even though it looks like a lot of money, I just caveat to think about, about where we are at in a very big global picture, that, you know, those chickens are, will come home to roost to us one way or another. I can't predict how well, but I don't think we're gonna see money flooding from the federal government again like we just have, because right now, the government's and the Fed is trying to slam on the brakes. So.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. Councilor Rand, then Councilor Sweeney.
Thank you.
Councilor St. Hilaire.
Councilor Houseman, you covered a lot of ground in your comment, so, yes.
Counselor Hausmann, you covered a lot of ground in your comments. So we could check a bunch of things that we might have all been not even thinking about off of our list. So thank you. I'm going to sort of, first of all, I support this transfer, and thank you for your analysis, Mr. Perry, as always. And I guess I just want to add to the conversation to say that this is a time of year where I always think, wow, Beverly is in, as a city, we are in amazing economic shape, and it is in part due to these policies that Counselor Hausmann actually worked really hard with the administration on to put forward, along with Mr. Perry. But then I also think about just the sort of dichotomy of the health of our city as we operate and the experience of our citizens and their economic stability. I think there is a difference there. And I think, you know, I'm not saying that the stabilization fund is, you know, a source for alleviating that, the pressure that our citizens are feeling. But this is always the time of year where it really confronts me that we're supporting this wealth as a city administration, and we're doing the right things with it, open space, you know, clearly like service-oriented teachers, all of the right things. I just always hit the philosophical dilemma of how do we bring our citizens along with the same economic stability? And I always come to housing as a major road block. Like, how can we, as a stable and economically healthy city, support affordable housing even better than we do now? And just philosophically, that's how I, that's the conversation I come to when we are presented with the free cash balance. That sort of strikes me as where that's like the knot in the rope that I think of when it comes to finances with both of, like, our role in the city and supporting the administration's role in the city, but then supporting our citizens becoming economically stable and creating a community where that's possible. And that doesn't mean that everybody is wealthy in the city, and it doesn't mean we kick out, you know, people who are on fixed incomes or need lower income housing. So just wanted to share my philosophical dilemma when the stabilization fund comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rand. Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to the councilors for the points you've already made. I think this is a very enlightening conversation so far, and obviously one that we need to continue. And thank you, Ms. Viznick, as well, for coming to speak to us. And this conversation really underscores the, how most impactful policy decisions are made through these types of votes from the financial side of government. So I would definitely add my voice to the choir alongside Counselor Bowen and Counselor St. Heler, that I do believe we should take advantage of the unique opportunity that we're in financially to add to what we spend annually on our roads and sidewalks budget. I think that's, you know, Commissioner Collins spoke to a handful of the councilors the other day. We need to think about roads and sidewalks as our city's largest asset, and how really vitally important they are to our day-to-day lives. So definitely, we want to echo those sentiments, and many of those expressed by Counselor Hausmann as well, about the external factors that are at play, that we may not always think of when making these decisions of how to appropriate funding locally, as we think, you know, two, three, four, five years down the road. But I will say, I think we should continue along with the policy as it's been developed, especially with this transaction. Point that Mr. Ailes made that I think should be emphasized about state aid being a very large portion of our local revenues, but one that often is not seen publicly. The current administration's made a commitment to maintain state aid along with state revenue growth, and they've been able to follow through with that over the previous eight years, given strong increases in state revenue year over year. But we're not sure what that's going to look like down the road. And that would be the obvious wild card where if state aid were to decrease significantly as it had in the last recession, that's really where, as Mr. Perry alluded to, that's where this stabilization fund balance is so important to ensuring that we can maintain spending on services, and particularly on personnel, which is the largest portion of our budget. And then to speak to the points the councilors have made about opportunities to invest in our city, I think that's what excites me most about the $12.6 million in ARPA funding that we have available. That's a one-time, pretty notable infusion of cash from the federal government directly to us here in Beverly. And that's where I would say we do have the opportunity to both build our stabilization fund, consistent with our financial policies, but then also look to the ARPA funding and our free cash balance as well to make some really meaningful investments in our city. So we're fortunate to be in a situation, as we are, to both build our reserves while still deploying funding to pretty significant one-time investments as we work through our longer-term recovery from COVID. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sweeney. And before we go to Counselor Crowley, I'm going to pause this public hearing so that I can reopen the public hearing, recess to 9:35 on Order 50, and would entertain a motion to recess that to 9:45.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. And so I will recess the public hearing on Order Number 50 to 9:45, and we'll pick up the public hearing on Order 49 with Counselor Crowley.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's comments and stuff so far. One of the questions or one of the topics both of you have talked about is, we know where we're at now, and there's that figure floating around, we'll say mid, to have further discussions around that, 13%, 14%. So in the trajectory that we're going right now, where do you see us getting to that point?
Yeah, that's certainly a very fair and thoughtful question. The amount we're requesting to be transferred this year, 1.1 million, is the high watermark, right? This is the highest level we've ever certified free cash. A typical year is seven, eight, nine million dollars. And so normally, we'd be coming before the council with a 700 or an 800 or a $900,000 transfer. So if you use that as your basis for assumption, that likely would be probably two to three years, I would think, till we get up in that range. Because keep in mind, your annual budget's growing as well, so the percentage related to that needs to continue to not only keep pace with the budget growth, but actually gain ground to get up into those percentages that you're talking about.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess a note I would probably put on that is, looking at that two years, plus the two years we just went through with COVID, and we survived fairly well from what everybody's talking about as far as the city goes, I would echo everybody else's comments, because I've heard the same thing as far as Ward III and those type things, as far as, you know what, we have this, we have a little bit available. Where else can we put back into with those? I know we have some of the stuff with ARPA, so maybe this is an opportunity, whether it's, you know, talking about, we have a lot of things to catch up on, as far as things that have been let go, whether it's streets, sidewalks, whatever it might be as far as within these projects. But I, you know, I think this is the same thing, and I echo, I think we have some more conversations to have. And maybe if it is, if we're doing that well and taking a million and moving it that way, I mean, that's just, you know, whichever, but I think we still, you know, have some more conversations here. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Crowley. Are there other comments or questions on Order 49? Okay. Oh, sure.
Madam President?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I would echo what Counselor Hausmann said on a lot of fronts. First, that the conversation, this conversation is always of great value whenever it comes up. And, boy, so, yes, the needs are great right now. We were, we have been incredibly fortunate, because we all feared the bottom falling out on state aid. We feared what would happen with our own revenues with COVID. I think what we learned, right, is that some sectors did really well, others totally flatlined. And that's where that, you know, that focus of federal and state money that we've been able to get has helped. But the state was able to make good on state aid numbers two years in a row through this, and the federal government has put historic money into communities. And so we have real money through the three rounds of ESSER. We have real money through CARES and through ARPA. On the one hand, I'll say the ARPA money's a lot, and the other, I'll say it's not, right? And I think we can all understand that. And so I believe that at present, we all collectively are working hard to make that money really count. So that's one. Another point is, I'm not sure that I'll be excited about not putting money into stabilization when we get to 13%. I believe that the 10% of free cash in every year really matters. You know, we all together, day in and day out, and certainly through our managing of the city's financial resources and our work every year together on budget, we're trying to make sure that we deliver really great services in all our departments, and certainly in our schools, day in and day out throughout the year. And the goal of the stabilization fund is to try to ensure that when the inevitable downturn in the economy does come, and we've been incredibly fortunate that most of us have only been involved in the city in an elective way during growth economies. And as I said, we, you know, we've been incredibly fortunate that doomsday on the financial side hasn't come with COVID. But there will be another downturn, and the real goal for all of us is to make sure that these great services we're trying to deliver, day in and day out, we're able to deliver them right on through and out the other side of that next recession. And that's really, you know, and it does, there is great value in digging into the numbers and the percentages. And I think as long as we keep that as a value, then, you know, let's keep having the conversation. I think it is really important tonight for you folks to support the, you know, the policy that we all worked on together. And I know not all of you were here to vote that policy in as councilors, but I think it is really important that we continue to put that money in at that percent right now. So thanks for all of this conversation and all the really good thinking.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Any final comments or questions on Order 49? With that, I will close this public hearing on Order 49 and refer that back to the Committee on Finance and Property. Ms. Can, why don't we take the last order under Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, but not before I correct, I misspoke, Order 72 should be referred to Finance and Property, please? I think I said Legal Affairs. Order 72 to Finance and Property, please.
Order Number 74. Dear honorable City Council, I respectfully submit to you the 2022 Capital Expenditure Plan pursuant to Section 6-8 of the City Charter. The document contains narratives on the city's capital needs that will likely need to be addressed in the future. Also contained with the document are important schedules outlining estimate costs along with potential financing obligations over the next 10 years. I hope you find this document informative and helpful as we work together in planning for our city's future. Since it's yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. I think, because we only have two minutes before we reopen that last public hearing, I just want to take a minute to just say, I know some of the neighbors who are here, you've been waiting really patiently, and you came in in sort of the middle of this marathon of public hearings. So I think it can be really convoluted, and anyone watching on Bev Cam, I think I just want to use a minute to explain the public hearing cycle. Once public hearings are set, we sort of adhere to those times and have to adhere to them and work our way through. So I know folks are waiting for some different issues to come out. We're wrapping up with the last one, but I want to thank you for your patience and the fact that we had sort of this long string of public hearings tonight, and really have to, once their time comes due, we have to open them. And then, as you've seen several times, recess them and keep going back to them. But just wanted to take a moment and explain for anyone watching sort of what the mechanics is and why we keep sort of hopping back and forth. And thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience as well. Okay, I talked myself almost to it. All right, let's reopen the public hearing on Order Number 50. This is the transfer of city's free cash balance, the amount of $1.1.5 million to be placed in the City Hall Rehabilitation Capital Project Fund. We left off sort of in the midst of a conversation, I think, between Counselor Bowen and you, Mr. Ailes. And before we pick up there, I do want to just, I guess, get a sense if councilors feel that you have a lot more you'd like to be able to discuss on this, given the hour, given that we've got neighbors here who are waiting for us to take some action in subcommittee on some other issues, and that we still have other business in front of us. If it feels like we want to have a fuller conversation, I would be open to recessing this to our next regular meeting and not feeling like we have to wrap this one up quickly tonight. If people feel that you don't have as much conversation on this one ahead, we can forge ahead. Counselor Hausmann.
I have one question that really relates to the substance of what the design might be, and I don't know if that's a long answer, a short answer, or whether that would take much time.
Mr. Ailes.
I will try to give you a short answer. So, once the designer comes onboard, they will meet with department heads, they will meet with stakeholders, and they will determine kind of a needs assessment. Then they will look at the existing structure and talk about what's feasible, given, you know, a rough range of budget that we'd be looking at, which would be very similar to what's in the capital plan. And then they would come up with an explanation at that.
And to what degree would city councilors, either through our council president or otherwise, have any part of that dialogue or input?
Well, similar to, if you recall, Counselor, I know you were on the council when we were dealing with the middle school, there were periodic times that we would come before the council and explain where the project was at, kind of why we've, the team, the OPM, the designer, came up with certain thoughts around feasibility, needs, all of that. But certainly, before it takes another step forward at that point, it would require another vote from the city council to actually fund the project.
Okay. I guess I would just say that unlike all the other buildings in the city, the city council doesn't conduct its business there. We do conduct our business in City Hall. And so I would hope that the administration would extend an open hand to full participation by the council in whatever form that might take in those discussions about that kind of renovation.
Yeah, that's logical, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Bowen, I don't want to lose track of where we left off with some questions from you. Did you want to pick up on that?
Sure. And I, you know, sort of getting a sense of people's timing, I feel like I do have more questions and don't feel comfortable supporting where it's at without more information. So if we have time for that now, great. If postponing until, or recessing until next meeting would help gather some of that information in the meantime and have a fuller discussion.
Madam President, I would like to support Counselor Bowen's desire to be more comfortable around, you know, substantial expenditure. So I would be perfectly comfortable and happy to make or support a motion, if it's not time-sensitive for the administration that they might want to refer to, to kick this off until to another city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, thank you all. If I could just, a thought, if you're looking to recess over to the next meeting, I know we've talked a little bit about what else is on that agenda. We are trying to bring forward at the next meeting the multi-site solar array proposal, which I know you've got a public hearing scheduled for eight already, and we'll be looking to try to do a good chunk of work with you between seven and eight. I just mentioned that to help you in planning, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Counselor Hausmann.
I would just say that the design of City Hall and the sort of broader conversation around solar arrays may be somehow connected. So I recognize we have some real timing issues. But again, I'll defer to Counselor Bowen on whether that, but I'd be happy to support her desire to try to come up with another time to have this conversation, so it can be more full.
Mr. Mayor, you're back at the podium.
Yeah, I'm looking to Ms. Williams and Mr. Ailes, and trying to figure out how much of your time we're going to need on the, I'm not sure how much time we're going to need to ask you for in that meeting on the solar package. If, 45 minutes, 50 minutes? At least 45. And if you're going to try to do this that night, two, I don't know, maybe it goes on, maybe you put a time limit on the eight o'clock hearing as a result. at, maybe you put a time limit on the eight o'clock hearing as a result. Yeah, right now. I mean, we're all happy to be here late in the evening with you again, it's lots of fun. By the way, Madam President, you've been running a great meeting. This has not been easy with all this hopscotching on the hearings.
Thank you.
Oh, please.
Solicitor Williams.
Madam President, in the event you are not going to complete your conversation tonight, I just would ask that the record is clear as to whether or not you're closing the public hearing and continuing your own conversation. If the public hearing is going to remain open, I suggest that you have the city clerk put in another ad in the news to note that we're continuing the public hearing discussion until March 21st.
Thank you.
I have a question. The council is meeting next Monday. We wouldn't have to wait until the 21st if we wanted to take this up and finish this next Monday, perhaps?
Put in the add-on paper. Would it be posted?
Well, it depends on whether the public hearing is open, remains open or not.
Councilor Feldman.
I just have a quick question in process. It seems like the public hearing part of this is completed because there are no other members of the public. And if this is going to subcommittee, I'm just kind of confused as to why we can't send this to subcommittee to further the discussion. So, that's my thoughts.
Councilor Feldman, you also just read my mind. My next suggestion is going to be, if councilors are comfortable, I would suggest that we close this and send it to subcommittee where we can have as much conversation as we want. Councilor Smithy.
I guess I just have one more question for Mr. Ailes before we kind of keep the process moving on that end. Would he be able to take questions if we close the public hearing, or is this the last opportunity?
No, he can take more questions.
Okay.
And we could invite him to subcommittee for fuller conversation as well. I don't want to assume that you are available, Mr. Ailes, but we could work with him on that.
I'll make the time.
Thank you. Councilor St. Hilaire, I saw your hand up. I just didn't...
I was, she read my mind.
You were just going to say the same thing. Okay. We all had that lightbulb moment.
One of mine is out there, yeah.
Good. Let's close the public hearing portion of the conversation in Order 50. We'll refer that to Finance and Property, and there'll be a chance for more conversation there at length. Ms. Kent, let's go to Communications from other city officers and boards. And thank you, Mr. Ailes and everybody who's been very generous with your time this evening, and thank you, councilors, and Kim in the booth. Thank you. Hanging in. All right, Ms. Kent.
Order Number 75 from Tim Flaherty, Charter Review Committee Chair, the final report. And the report is on file in our office on the website, and you all got a copy of that.
Thank you. Oh, sure. Thank you, Solicitor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Obviously, I'm not Mr. Flaherty. He was here earlier this evening and unfortunately wasn't able to stay. I believe he had intended to speak briefly and basically summarize what is in his letter to the council. So, one possibility would be to just simply read the letter, and then he would intend, obviously, to be back when the council takes it up in further detail and have an in-depth conversation in Legal Affairs. So, it's up to you whether or not you read the letter, but that's why he's not here right now, so.
Thank you very much, Solicitor Williams.
I can read it.
You've done a lot of reading. So even though I also am not Tim Flaherty, I will read the letter. Dear Honorable Beverly City Council, on behalf of the Beverly Charter Review Committee, I herewith respectfully submit for your consideration and review proposals for modifications regarding the Beverly City Charter. Attached with this cover letter are two reports. The first document is a clean version of the recommendations of the committee, including an executive summary. The second is a redline document which assists the reader to easily understand the various proposed modifications. In early 2021, the Beverly City Council established this committee with the express purpose of reviewing, modernizing, and updating the Beverly City Charter. The committee has been meeting for over a year considering numerous issues. The committee has also held a virtual public hearing due to COVID-19 considerations where citizens gave their input in several areas. Finally, several public officials and others have either visited or been invited to our numerous meetings, providing their feedback and advice. We, as a committee, wish to thank everyone who has assisted us in our discussions. We respectfully request that the city council initiate appropriate action on this matter, including but not limited to establishing a public hearing for citizens to weigh in as necessary. I, the Collins Center, and the Charter Review Committee members plan on attending any and all meetings to assist the council in your review of this matter. We would like to extend a special note of appreciation to our consultant, Marilyn Contreras, from the UMass Collins Center, our city solicitor, Stephanie Williams, and city council budget management analyst, Jerry Perry, for their assistance throughout our deliberations. Arrangements have been made to have Ms. Contreras attend the appropriate city council meetings during your review as a resource moving forward. Sincerely yours, Timothy Flaherty, chairperson, Beverly Charter Review Committee. And I do want to mention that he includes the members of that committee, so thanks go to them as well. Former Councilor Stacy Ames, current Councilor Hannah Bowen, Julie DeSilva, Richard Dinkin, Michael Pinciaro. So thank you very much to all of those folks for working so hard on this. Let's refer Order Number 75 to the Committee on Legal Affairs, please. And among other things, they will set a public hearing. Let's go, Ms. Kent, to Order 79, the city solicitor, so that Ms. Williams can also speak to this home rule petition portion.
Order Number 79 from the city solicitor, a process for local approval of home rule petition to amend the city's 1995 Home Rule Charter.
I'm going to thank you again, councilors, keep my comments very brief and simply give you a couple of highlights of what's involved in approving a home rule petition seeking special legislation, which is what the Charter Review Committee is recommending that the council and city do in order to effect changes in the current 1995 Home Rule Amendment Charter. The primary process involves approval by the city council, an affirmative vote by five members of the council, and approval of the mayor. There is no veto override procedure that is in play with respect to home rule petitions. So, that's a process that's afforded to municipalities under the state constitution. There are a few other ways that communities can seek to amend their charters, but this is the process that's being recommended by the committee. And the committee also, assuming the state legislature approves the home rule petition, it's not legally necessary to obtain voter approval. However, it's highly recommended that in the event an amendment pertains to the composition, method of election, or term of office of elected officials, or any type of controversial matter, that those provisions or those proposed amendments do go to the voters. And to the extent, I know the committee is recommending that certain provisions go to the voters, and that should be clearly identified in the petition. The plan is that a draft home rule petition will be drafted through, I believe at this point, a combination of my office and the Collins Center, and the council will have it in plenty of time to take their vote. So you don't have to worry about actually drafting it, but those are essentially some of the highlights. Once that happens and the mayor approves it, it would then be sent to our state delegation, and our senator and our representative would at that point facilitate and usher the petition through the process. And then it would have to be signed by the governor, and then any provisions that require voter approval would be put on the next municipal election ballot, which would be in 2023. So, I think those are the highlights. And I will be attending your meetings that relate to charter amendments, so we can have a further discussion about these, about this process, when you're ready.
Thank you very much, Solicitor Williams. And thank you also for being with us for so long tonight. Thank you for hanging in with us. Please refer Order Number 79 to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Let's go back to Order 76, please, Ms. Kent.
Order Number 76 from the Community Preservation Committee, the ninth round CPA project funding recommendations.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set a public hearing.
Order Number 77, the quarter two summary from the School Committee, Finance and Facilities, from Councilor Rotundo and Council President Flowers.
Thank you very much. Councilor Rotundo, anything you'd like to say about this?
I do not. Just thank Jean Sherburne for her help, as always. It's been a pleasure to work with her as well as with you, Council Flowers.
Feeling is mutual, Councilor Rotundo. I would entertain a motion to receive and place this on file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero.
Order Number 78 from the City Clerk's Office, new license for Witch City Taxi at 92 Jackson Street in Salem. And they were here earlier, and I believe we lost them.
I did see that they were here, and so if they're watching at all, thank you for being here with us. Please refer this to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Let's go to Communications, Applications, and Petitions.
Order Number 80 from Keolis, 2022 yearly operating plan.
I would entertain a motion to receive this and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. Ms. Kent, let's go to motions and orders, please.
Order Number 55, be entertained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. In the year 2022, in ordinance, amending an ordinance relative to Chapter 270 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 270-49 Off-Street Parking/Handicap Parking, amending Section 270-49 as follows. Add a handicap parking sign and space at Lyons Park vicinity of 126 Lothup Street. The space would be on the eastern side of Lothup Street, adjacent to the playground structure. This was published in the newspaper on February 25th.
Thank you. And so, we need to take a vote on this, and then it will appear on our subsequent meeting agenda for final passage. Is there a motion in favor of Order 55?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero, and that will appear for final passage on our next meeting. I would entertain a motion to take a break for some committee work.
So moved.
Second.
Madam President, did we do Order 74 by chance, the capital expenditure plan? Was that right out? We did read that?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't...
No, thank you. I appreciate that, Councilor Rotundo.
It's just for somebody, I knew we were bouncing around, and I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss it.
We were bouncing around.
All right, thank you.
No, I appreciate it. Sorry, motion to take a break for some committee work.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll take a break for some committee work. We'll have Finance and Property stay here, please. Legal Affairs in the committee room, and Public Services on the bench. Thank you.[1335.16] Thank you.
Where am I going to be writing my votes?
I do somewhere, but. Maybe though, right?
No, I was thinking the sheet that I gave you.
Do I have?
Oh, um, yeah. Is it? No, I don't.
What?
Yes.
Yep.
Where are you going to go first, Scott? Are you going to go with the ones that are not referred or are you going to vote with the older ones?
So let me ask you a quick question while I'm waiting for Julie. Are these all ones we're sitting in a public hearing on?
So these are the ones in the public hearing which is tonight, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty.
Called order, Subcommittee on Finance and Property. Good evening, Mr. Perry. Good evening, Mr. Ailes.
Chairman.
I am going to assume, committee, that we've already had a full discussion about every question you might have, unless you let me know otherwise, because we've got a lot of votes to take and I would just as soon try to get right through them. So do you have any things you're going to want to ask our bean counters here as we go through this? Do you know?
No, but.
Off the top of your head, because you really haven't had that much chance.
No, but my sense was, and I don't know what Matt thinks about this, but my sense, or what you think, but my, sorry, Councilor St. Helair. I don't know why I just remembered his first name. We're on TV and everything. My sense was that those last two, forty-nine and fifty, it seems like there's fuller conversation that councilors would like to have about those.
Yeah, I agree.
And so I wonder about if you two feel comfortable holding those for a fuller Justice Finance and Property meeting.
We do a Subcommittee meeting.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I have, uh, yeah, I have fifty, I have fifty flag.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're done with forty-nine, but fifty, yes.
Maybe although, didn't we sort of leave?
Forty.
I don't want to speak for anybody else, but was forty-nine the one where councilors were saying it would be good to have this bigger conversation?
No, that was fifty about City Hall.
It got co-mingled.
Forty-nine is the.
I think they were both.
They were co-mingled, in my opinion.
I think it was both personally, too.
Do you want to, do you want to hold the transfer on the stabilization and OPEB, because that's forty-nine?
I felt like that was the, I don't want to speak for the councilors that descended the table, but just in sort of facilitating the conversation and Councilor St. Helair, then you can jump in. But I felt like I heard that conversation there being, we'd like to have a.
Any sense of urgency, Mr. Ailes? I'm sorry, Mr.
No, you knew where I was going.
That's alright, go ahead.
Not so much with the transfer one. There is some, you know, sense of time sensitivity with the City Hall. If you want to get that project going, you've selected an OPM and just awaited the contract within the camp until that one.
So the Council President, can, could we deal, now that the public hearing has been closed, could we deal with that next week? Committee of the whole and City Clerk is here.
You can if Council President wants to.
We can.
You post it, you have to repost it in the paper.
No, because it's closed.
It's closed, yeah.
It's, it's not continued, it's closed.
We can.
It's just in committee.
Okay.
Yep. I was just going to say that just a reminder that the substance of that first meeting is likely to be about two hours.
And what's that scheduled for, six?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty? Couldn't, could we maybe meet at six and deal with this?
It's already been posted for six-thirty today.
Thanks, Allison.
It's Ms. Dixon's.
Could we recess that? Deal with it? Well, I guess, because we're talking about maybe having a longer conversation.
Yeah, it's already been closed, so it would be more if you hold it, like the public hearing itself is closed.
Councilor St. Helair, you would like to hold forty-nine as well as fifty?
I am comfortable approving both of them, but I understand the desire to have a larger conversation, so, you know, I'm open to that playing out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, so you're saying there's time sensitivity around the City Hall. I, I would like to support Councilor Bowen in having a chance to do that. So, go ahead, Council President.
I just wanted to say that as the, as the person who's sort of just, with, with order fifty said, let's put it in Subcommittee so we can have a bigger conversation, I would feel not as comfortable moving it out of Subcommittee right away on, for the other councilors who aren't in this conversation, if that's agreeable.
You mean you want to wait until they come back in, decide whether or not to hold or not?
I would just suggest having that as a separate Subcommittee conversation.
Yeah, at a different date. Yeah, so, holding it.
Is there any, um, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mayor.
Is there any urgency? We're, we're meeting with, with the OPM candidate on the twenty-third. We, we can't, we can't sign a contract with it until the money's approved. But if the money were, if you folks were able to revisit it in time to do something with it at the next meeting, that wouldn't be a problem. If it took till the meeting after that, it might hold, hold up getting, getting folks on board, getting them started.
What's the next meeting look like?
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first.
Yeah, it looks like.
That's why I was asking about the meeting of the whole, because we, we may be wanting to, you, you folks have wanted to have the opportunity to hear from the, the two consultants on what fifteen KB wired to the public. Maybe could plug up your Committee of the Whole further on the fourteenth. Just saying.
Mr. Perry?
Maybe I can help. I spent well over an hour with Council Bowen on this issue on the phone.
Which one?
Council, on, on the City Hall.
Okay, alright.
I agree with, you could wait on the stabilization, you know, if you want a bigger conversation. That's not, that's not mission critical. But I understand the time sensitivity of the City Hall thing. The concern is, I understand, I wish she was here, but the concern I understand from her, she thought it was a lot of money. I, quite frankly, if I had the opportunity to speak here, then I would have said, I was surprised they didn't put more in there. In my perspective, I thought they should have put two million in there. Because it goes to the whole concept, this is a conversation we had going back to March, April, and May of two thousand seventeen, when we decided to try to, when we figured out the financial plan of how to do a police station. There was a, there's cause and effect here and the cause and effect was that, you know, hopefully we get a police station, figure out how to pay for it, build it, get it done, and then the next phase was this building going forward.
And we did the same thing for the middle school.
Yeah, okay. So, so the point being, now we get them out, we get the room of the police station, the opportunity is there. The financing, in my opinion, is there for this. And the strategy, I think Mr. Ailes would agree, is, and we discussed this ad nauseam, was similar to the police station, where we're going to be doing this two, couple, one, two, three years on free cash if you agree to it, and then ultimately bond it, depending on whatever the cost was. Now, having said all that, Council Bowen, as I understand her, and I don't want to speak for her, her main concern was the amount of money being brought forward. She thought it was too much, yet ironically, I thought it wasn't enough. So I just want you to be aware what her, what she expressed to me, her concerns are.
Yeah, and I heard her comparing it to the Fearsen Youth Center, which is a much smaller project in any way.
Right.
But, Council President.
I was going to say, I guess I would, I just don't feel that comfortable making an assessment on what we think Council Bowen wants to talk about without Council Bowen in the room.
I'm going to hold forty-nine, excuse me, fifty, until perhaps Council Bowen comes in. We have a lot of business we can cut through, get a lot done. If she comes back in, we can revisit whether or not to hold number fifty. I think we're done with number forty-nine, which is the stabilization fund and OPEB. I thought there was a lot of conversation on that. So I'd be comfortable moving ahead on that one. Councilor St. Helair, where are you on that?
I agree. I'm ready to approve.
And Councilor, uh, Council President?
I'm happy to vote it back out for the.
Okay, alright, fine. So, in that case.
Do a motion to approve?
Well, Lisa wants you to ignore it.
Oh, yeah, it will help me at the end of the night.
Instructively. So, we're going to hold off on deciding on, on, on the City Hall thing for the moment. So let's start with number forty-seven, correct?
Correct.
And again, I'm going to assume unless someone jumps in that conversation has already been had, right? So I would accept a motion on order number forty-seven to approve the transfer of, transfer seventy thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for the waterway improvement fund.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. And I'm ready, you want me to write in here?
Yep. I'm going to do it for you too, so don't worry about it too much.
Alright. Order number forty-eight, transfer of six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars free cash into the capital fund.
Six point two zero eight five.
Thank you very much. This is to deal with the turf field and the rescinding of the loan that we took out, that we authorized for the turf field. Do I hear a motion to approve order forty-eight?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Order number forty-nine. Uh, duh, 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 duh. Oh, order forty, we're, oh, yeah. Order number forty-nine is the transfer of one million one hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars to place, to be placed in the stabilization fund and transfer of two hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and four dollars in free cash to be placed in the OPM trust fund. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, seconded by Council President. I'm going to skip over number, order fifty for the moment. I'm going to hold order fifty-eight, I'm going to hold, which is rodents, I'm going to hold rodent-related matter. Let me clarify.
They are very soft.
I'm going to order, excuse me, I'm going to hold, duh, 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 duh. Oh, number sixty, Council President. You and I talked about the scheduling of number sixty, that is the, the council discussion around budget issues. We decided to do that at the next council meeting, correct? No, at the end of the month. I don't have.
At the end of the month.
My calendar's in my phone, so at the end of the month. So I'm going to hold that for the time being, just because we've got such a choked calendar here. Order number sixty-two, I'm also going to hold, that relates to the cable transmission project of National Grid. And I'm also going to hold number sixty-four, also relating, relate to rodent control issues. That brings us to order number sixty-six, which is the transfer of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the city's free cash for Simon Street.
Make a, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilor St. Helair.
Second.
Seconded by Council President. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Uh, do we have? Called order, Committee of the Whole. Order number sixty-eight, which is grants an amount of six hundred and two, six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the fire safety program. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Order number sixty-nine, transfer of ten thousand five hundred dollars for the union, union contract with the fire department. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Are we, are we sitting in a public?
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Thank you. I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear a motion to approve public hearing. Thank you very much for, reading the wrong, wrong column here. I'd like a motion to approve setting a public hearing for seven fifteen on March twenty-first.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Did I miss something?
Seven fifteen PM.
I left out the PM. I said seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'll put, I'll put in the PM, so, okay. That passes three zero.
Maybe we should start at seven fifteen AM, given our.
Yes, yeah, that's true. I would accept a motion on order number seventy to set a public hearing for seven twenty-five PM on March twenty-first. This relates to the transfer of funds for one of the union contracts. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Order number seventy-two, which is grant of one thousand three hundred dollars from the Massachusetts Drug Stewardship Program to address opioid collection at the police department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you for moving it along, Councilor St. Helair. Order number, order number seventy-three, grant an amount of three thousand dollars for the Emergency Management Task Force. Do I hear a motion to approve this grant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Order number seventy-six. This is the community preservation, oh, I'm sorry, this is setting in a public hearing. I would accept an, an order on, excuse me, a motion on order number seventy-six to set a public hearing at seven thirty PM on April fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Does that call like the order number seven, seven-one?
I have.
Two hundred thousand. It does not. Complete separate, okay.
Separate, yep, it's finance.
We got on that?
Yep.
Okay, that brings us back to,
Fifty, fifty.
To fifty. And we voted on forty-nine. So I believe Council Bowen is in the room.
Here I am.
So let's see if we can wrestle this to the ground, Councilor Bowen. The question is whether we should hold this for later discussion. And the, as I've mentioned, I'm, I'm willing, I'd like to support you on doing that. Unfortunately, we have both a time sensitivity and a really, really challenging calendar in the next couple of weeks and certainly our next meeting, next two meetings, really. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I think the stickler question for me is what exactly the one point five million gets us right now that half a million wouldn't get us started on, we get some other funds right now? Because understanding those costs was really helpful if we spent nothing. But everything's, you know, trade nations, so it's sort of understanding what that one point five million is for the time sensitive request. And whether there is a request coming for.
Mr. Ailes, feel free.
A few couple steps in the, in the coming year.
Right.
Including some design work. The, the own initial piece of.
If, if I may, for the benefit of the public, if people could speak in close to the, the microphones, so that your words are picked up.
Yes. So can I address the question? So, thank you for, again, giving me these in advance, because I was able to look at some of our past projects. So for the middle school, which timing-wise took place, this phase of the middle school project took place, oh, probably about six years ago, maybe even more. And at that point in time, the, this designer phase was one point two million and the OPM was about a quarter million. So that in total was about the one point five million that we're asking for this project. Now, this project isn't as big scale-wise, but there are complexities of this building being an, you know, a reno and that kind of lend itself to maybe pushing up some of those design costs and feasibility study costs upfront. But we, we do think that this amount will allow us enough flexibility to, to get through the entire schematic design phase and potentially bring on the contract manager to help with that process earlier on. Yeah, does that help give you a sense of scale?
It, it does. And so I think then it's that scale in comparison to other priorities. And are you anticipating, based on, you know, we're now pretty far into the, this fiscal year, how do projections look? Do you anticipate a request coming in front of us for a healthy plus-up this year for?
Yeah.
Roses and sidewalks is the one on my mind. Maybe there are other things you'd put before that, but.
Yeah, I mean, do you want to, do you want to speak to it, or? I mean, we, we did share, you know, the other day when we had our meetings, that there are other things, particularly the central fire station could use an infusion of cash to get some of that exterior work off the ground over there that we've been designing for the past, or we had an engineer on board that helped us kind of configure that project a little bit. So that is a possibility. The other possibility, depending upon where revenues are coming in at, is the library HVAC and how much of that we actually request this year compared to next year. However, the free cash for this building will buy us a year's worth of work. So if you think about the timing of free cash, we may not have another bite at free cash. If we kind of say, said, okay, let's do five hundred thousand, that might not get us to a year from now. And we might need, that might stall the project or, you know, use some time. Sorry, I'm getting a little delirious.
Mr. Mayor.
Aaron, yeah, just real quickly, I think, unless something goes sideways with revenues between now and June, we're very hopeful of coming back forward with a request on the library HVAC and, and likely something additional on, on fire. But, so, so that's really the answer, I think, that you're asking.
Yes, and I, and I think just understanding, yeah, the, the level of prioritization, it feels like this is a project that we do have a long-term plan for and space for. And not seeing those other requests coming yet, even though it's March, worries me if they're really priorities or not, I guess.
If I may, if I may, just quickly, keep this in mind. We're talking several years of a strategy. We've discussed this, you and I, on the phone. We have a unique window this year with the eleven point two million that I do not anticipate you seeing in future years. So that it could get more challenging down the road if you don't take advantage of it, in my view, this year. So I, I just ask you to consider that. My rough guess limit is eight to nine million next year in free cash and it's going to be a smaller amount of us to tackle this project. So I, I ask you, and you would have discussed this, so I mean, I just want to publicly make sure you're, we're on the same page as that.
Yeah, and I think, but part of my concern is that, that statement about we have more flexible funding this year than we might again anytime soon could be applied to any of the things on the list that we don't yet have a plan for financing in the way that the financial forecast does create a plan for City Hall where we don't have this cash infusion upfront versus the fire station or the roads or things that aren't built in. That, that's sort of what I'm grappling with.
If I, if I could, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Let's all remember that the police station has been vacant for seven months, six, seven months now, that we do have a need to bring the health department back and we do have a need to bring the inspectional services department back, both for the benefits of, of all of these departments being on one campus and also for the fact that there's a need for the spaces they're in currently. And then you go to the, the number of complexities. Look, we may well find that the police station is a gut reno, right? We may find that it's not in that good condition to do that. I think there's going to be at least some demo of the cell block area to make that square footage usable. But there's, there's a lot to find out with, with this, beginning of this work, so.
Yeah, I was going to speak more to the numbers, but that's a good point. The capital expenditure plan that you all have before you this evening places a placeholder of twelve million. But until we take this next step and get the designer in the OPM, we don't know how close we are with that. We found with the police station that the costs we were using, or the per-square-footage construction costs we were using to estimate that were far off base. And that's part of the reason why we needed to infuse so much cash over a three-year period into that project. That's one of the reasons. This project, with this cash infusion and a placeholder of twelve million, hopefully gets, gets it done, gets us close, but we may find ourselves needing to put more cash into the project to maintain that debt balance and not go too far above that.
While you ponder that answer for a moment, I, I have a, a question or a request. I, I earlier expressed a hope that the administration would include in some working fashion input from the City Council. And I, I guess I'd like to press for a firm commitment to that this evening, as we're in the process of starting to approve money for, potentially for the design phase.
So, Mr. Chairman, what are you thinking?
I, I'm thinking that the, that the City Council be involved so they can follow along in the discussion and provide any input, you know. In, in whatever fashion you and the Council President might deem, might, might, might work, he work.
Yeah, I, I think about the, the various meetings that were held, both in the design of the middle school and then the police station, with different, different groups of school personnel and then different, different parts of the command structure of the police department, like that. So, so the ability for council members to meet with the, with the, with the OPM and us and to meet with the designer when it comes to that and just have some, have some input on what you think is needed, what you're seeing as needed.
Yeah, and, and, and conceptual ideas about, about what could happen.
Committee.
Yes, absolutely. Here on TV, yes, absolutely.
Alright, so, yeah, you don't have to sign, but. Okay, good. Thank, thank you for that. That, that is important to me. This is the only building which City Council operates, you know, its business. So I, I think it's fair and appropriate. Thank you. I feel like I've given you support to have more time?
Yep.
So, I, unless you have any other questions, I'm going to ask for, I'm going to find my, I'm going to find my.
As you're looking for that still, I just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Want to finalize it. Look up your numbers there. As your analyst, I am recommending you pass this tonight, given the time sensitivity of the situation, given the totality of the dollar amounts. I think it's the wide, and, and. I think it's the why, and plus, everything coming at you over the next month or so, I think it's a wise decision to do it. It's my recommendation to the property financial passer tonight, recommending it to the councils as a whole.
I, Councilor, want to give you the last word to ask a question or state an opinion.
Yeah, I mean, maybe just last question is the, the time sensitivity of presenting it now versus presenting it when free cash was certified in November, December, versus presenting it at the time when our full balance, or full projection might be known, when we're considering important things like the library HVAC or the fire station, where this falls in then?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the main part of the timeframe had to do with the RF, I guess it was an RFS, Request for Service timeframe, which we just concluded, oh, we probably sent you a recommendation last week, I believe. And so, we had to get through that process before we could come and request for funding for the contract.
So, do we know that contract amount?
No, that has yet to be determined. It's negotiated between the mayor and the selected firm, once we agree on the final scope. We've got a general scope to find with the OPM, but then they come in and we refine, you know, how many hours it's going to take them to do X, Y, and Z, and we work with them to get that nailed down.
I'm going to call for a, a motion on order 50. I would accept a motion to approve order 50.
So moved.
There's a motion made?
Second.
Second by Council President. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries...
Three to zero.
Three to zero. And I believe we are done. Is that correct?
Yep, you're correct.
Great, I'm going to give that back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, he lost.
I'm going to call for a, a motion to recess committee of the whole. Adjourn, excuse me.
Recede the whole, yeah.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, I don't see probably is over there, nine, zero. Motion to adjourn finance and property?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Call to order the Beverly City Council. We'll go to reports from committees, please, Ms. Kent.
Order number 47, the committee on finance and property have considered said matter and beg leave to follows. Transfer of 70,920 from the waterway improvement fund. The transfer consists of 35,000 to support the CAD cell feasibility study grant, 32,800 to support the hoist pier construction grant, and 3,120 to support the Glover warp float feasibility study grant. That is approved three to zero.
Questions or comments on this one? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 48, the committee on finance and property have considered said matter and beg leave to follows. A transfer of 642,085 from the city's certified free cash balance into capital fund 598, and to rescind the previously authorized loan, order number 44-2021, of 750,000 for replacement of the turf field at the high school. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 49, the committee on financial, finance and property have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Transfer of 1,111,519 from the city's certified free cash balance to be placed in the city's stabilization fund, and a transfer of 224,304 from the city's free cash balance to be placed in the OPAP trust. Transfer total request totaling 1,305,823. Recommend the city approve the request. I mean, the council, the city, everybody.
For now, I'll just ask the council. Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 50, the committee on finance and property have considered said matter and beg leave to follows. Transfer of the city's free cash balance in the amount of 1.500, 1,500 to be placed in the city's hall rehabilitation capital project fund. Recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries eight, one.
Order number 59, the committee of legal affairs have considered said matter and beg leave to follows. An application for a new lodging house license for Jalbert Properties LLC for Highland Manor at 7 Highland Avenue. Recommend the license be granted as a conditional license for six months from March 1st, with the condition that fire extinguishes are placed in all units with cooking facilities. Recommend that that is, those conditions.
Questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 63, the committee on legal affairs have considered said matter and beg leave to follows. Regarding fixed route sightseeing tour application and process for council review and comment, receive and place on file.
Thank you, questions or comments on that? So, I'd entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Sorry, that's got in the middle of my finance and properties, I'm back.
That's okay.
The committee on finance and property have considered said matter and beg leave to follows. Transfer of 325,000 of the city's free cash over the remainder of the purchase price, as well as the cost of improvements, to the two lots of 14 Simon Street and 34 Simon Street. Recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 68, the committee on finance and property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a grant for 6,275 student awareness, fire education, and senior safe grant for 3,255 from the EOPSS Department of Fire Services. Total grant award 9,530 for public fire and life safety initiatives in our community. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the request.
Thank you very much, and our fire chief, Peter O'Connor, is here with us. Thanks for being here, Chief O'Connor. Is there anything you'd like to say about this grant at all?
We made it this far.
Do you have any questions? I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, thanks for being here. The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 69, the committee on finance and property, to whom was referred the matter regarding transfers of 10,500 from the reserve for union negotiations into the fire department budget to fund costs associated with the recently agreed upon MOBA between the city of Beverly and fire dispatch union. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments on this one? Anything that you'd like to add on this one, chief? All right, question comes on the, oh, sorry, Assistant Solicitor Jesse Dole?
I guess this would require...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Set a public hearing from March 21st at 7:15 PM. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing March 21st at 7:15.
So moved.
There's a second. I heard a second down there. Thank you, Councilor Rotundo, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 70, the committee on finance and property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a transfer of 113,500 into various municipal department budgets to fund costs associated with recently settled contract between city of Beverly and BMEA, and they request to set a public hearing on March 21st at 7:25 PM.
Thank you, I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 72, the committee on finance and property, to whom was referred the matter of a grant for 1,300 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts MED Project Drug Stewardship Program. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 73, the committee on finance and property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a grant for 3,000 to the emergency management task force, a hazardous material emergency preparedness grant from Mass Emergency Management Agency. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 76, to whom was referred, the committee on finance and property, for whom was referred the matter regarding the community preservation committee, nine round CPA project funding recommendations, and to set a public hearing on April 4th at 7:30 PM.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 67, the committee on legal affairs have considered said matter and beg leave to follow that regarding CPA funding recommendations for out-of-cycle application relative to the acquisition by the city of two vacant parcels located at 14 Simon Street and 35 Simon Street, cluster crossing pocket parks for the purpose of acquiring, preserving, and enhancing passive and active recreation space. Submit the, submit the company order and recommend its adoption.
Thank you. Questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero. And thank you again to the cluster crossing and Board Three residents who were here tonight, and you're still watching, congratulations. This is, this is an exciting vote to deal with.
Order number 71, the committee on legal affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding approving the purchase of 14 and 34 Simon Street, Beverly, for consideration of 200,000 each, have considered said matter and approved the submitting of the company order and recommend its adoption.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
Order number 75, the committee on legal affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding the child review committee final report, have considered said matter, and to set a public hearing on April 4th at 7:45 PM.
I'd entertain a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero. And I'd also entertain a motion, then, to refer order 75 back to the committee on legal affairs.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero, so we'll send 75 back to legal affairs.
Order number 78, the committee on legal affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding a new license for the Witch City Taxi, Inc., at 92 Jackson Street. Have considered said matter and recommend the license be granted.
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero. And if the folks from Witch City Taxi are still watching, congratulations. Thanks for joining us earlier. They were tired.
And order number 51, the committee on public services have considered said matter and beg leave to follows, to reappoint Mr. Michael Murphy as city Republican committee representative on the register of voters. Please approve this reappointment.
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries nine, zero.
That's all I got. What was that order number? Um, 51.
51.
That's all you've got? All I got? Is that not enough?
Anything else?
So...
Did we vote on 70? No, we just, that's just staying in committee.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. No, it's always good to check, thank you. So, we do have a committee of the whole, our subcommittee committee of the whole meeting next Monday, the 14th, at 6:30 PM. We'll be here in the council chambers, and our next regular meeting is March 21st at 7:00 PM, and we will have our public hearing on the National Grid reliability project during that meeting, as well as some other regular business.
Is that here, or?
Here, because of the legal ad that went out from National Grid listed as here. Thank you, excellent question. Are there any other last thoughts that anyone would like to share? I guess for the good of the order, not just thoughts. Councilor Housman.
Yeah, because I was absent at the last council meeting, although I did watch it live from Michigan on TV, and because we have such a challenging schedule, order number 60, which was, relates to my calling to finance and property to have a council-wide discussion on budget questions, we're just putting that off until the end of the month, based upon the way the, the calendar is going. We have so many, so much other business going on, so we'll, we'll schedule that meeting at some point a little bit later.
So, that's a stay tuned.
That's just an update.
Stay tuned. All right, well, thank you very much, everyone. Special thanks again to all of the members of the city staff and team who were here, including those who are still in the room right now. And thank you, Kim, Beth, Pam, for being with us and making sure that everyone at home could follow along. Thank you, councilors. I know that was a big agenda, and it was excellent work getting through it all. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we're adjourned.